Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the May 5th, 2020 Lewiston City Council Workshop and Business Meeting. Few quick items regarding meeting logistics before we get started. This session will be conducted remotely, and members will only participate electronically. Public comment on any items appearing on the agenda may be sent to publiccomment@lewistonmain.gov prior to or during the meeting, and all comments will be reviewed by the city council. For comments regarding our budget public hearing, members can also call area code 207-513-3017 to offer comments on the budget. Members of the public who are logged into the meeting online can also make a comment when invited to do so by raising their hand button, which is usually found at the lower end of the screen. Once you are acknowledged, their microphone will be unmuted, and they will be invited to make a brief comment. Before making comments, please state your name and the town of your residence. And councilors are asked to raise their hands as well. But I will add, if I seem to be missing it, don't hesitate to interrupt me and let me know that, please. All right, we'll begin the 6:00 PM workshop, and the first item is review of the impact of eliminating vacant positions, and I believe Ed will take this one away.
Well, I'll walk through this briefly. As you all know, you've got a memo that tried to outline this. Most of the information in the memo came from the respective departments. I just simply did some editing to put it together into one comprehensive package. But just real quickly, on the police department's side, there are two police officer positions that are included in the group that we are leaving vacant going into the coming fiscal year. More than likely, it would be virtually impossible for the department to fill those positions during the coming year unless they got very, very lucky. As of later this summer, they're going to have six vacancies, plus they have four candidates who are in academy training. The academy is shut down. We don't know when that's going to start up again. The chief got some indication it may not be till the fall. The chief is looking at other alternatives to try to find ways to get those people to complete their training. But even once they get through training, they're going to spend some time in field officer training and not really be out effectively on their own. So there'll be a period of time where the department effectively is down 10 positions. We get those four on, and the chief is hoping that he will be able to send at least three more off to the next academy, but we don't even know when that academy is going to be. That would still leave several vacancies. The only way that those vacancies could be filled would be if we found an existing certified police officer who was already trained, working for another department, who was looking to move to our department. That does happen sometimes. It doesn't happen that frequently. When it does happen, depending on how long that person's been out of the academy, we also have to reimburse the other department for training costs. So we've been understaffed at the police department for some time because of vacancies and difficulties filling them. If we can get to where we only have two vacancies, I think that would be an improvement over where we've been. So I don't think there's any huge immediate impact here, but clearly, the council added two positions to the police department last year, or several positions, in hopes of beefing up our field forces. We simply haven't been able to do that because of difficulties recruiting and the number of vacancies we have with retirements. Any questions on that one? I know Chief O'Malley's probably a participant, so he can join in if there are.
Lisa, do you have a question?
Yes, so I don't purport to know much about the academy. So folks were in it and were supposed to graduate May 1st, but were they sent home early?
Yes, they were sent home early, and Chief, you might talk about the status with the
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, we were in the middle of the academy, and then they closed down, Councilor Ray. So what we've been doing, doing some online training at the police department. We are lucky enough that we do have firearms instructors, EVOC, which stands for Emergency Vehicle Operation Courses, and toxilizer instructors. You know, we have a lot of these folks that other agencies don't. So we've been doing that training all along. So I'm hoping that maybe in a month, I'll be able to put them into the Field Training Officer Program, and then that's going to take another three months from there. But we're still going to take some testing, and the academy is working on the logistics and the IT of actually having the cadets do their remote testing. So that's still a work in progress. But they actually closed it down for two weeks and then officially said, yeah, you're not coming back.
Okay, that's super helpful. Thank you, Chief.
Any other questions on the police department? All right, thank you. And Chief O'Malley, just a quick thank you for the email that you sent out earlier today, kind of explaining that concern. So thank you. All right, Ed.
Okay, the next one is the fire department, where there's a fire inspector vacant position that's being held. That position was recommended by the rental registration committee, and the intent of the position was to have someone on staff who could pick up the proactive multifamily inspections during periods of time when the pumper or engine companies were not available to do it because of weather and concerns about freezing up their equipment. So this would have been an additional position. I will tell you, during the recession, we had, prior to the recession, we had two fire inspectors. During the recession and immediately after, we reduced it to one as part of the overall effort to reduce city expenses. We did get that position restored probably three or four years ago now. So this would have been in addition to that. This is a position that we have not had. It certainly would be one that would be helpful in terms of us increasing our inspection activities, but not having this is not going to worsen the situation from where it's been in recent years. Any questions on that position? And I know, I'm assuming, Fire Chief's probably here too, so.
Any questions? And I don't see any questions. Chief, do you have anything you want to add to that?
I would just say that, you know, I think I laid it out pretty well inside the note that was given, and that's what's in your packet. It was one of the, certainly from my perspective, of course, from where I am, it's, you know, last year it was taken, put in the system, and we didn't get an assistant chief. That was one of our pieces. And here we are again. So again, I would agree with Ed that we're not necessarily going to be worse, but we're certainly not going to be addressing any of the issues that we've identified. So now, we certainly won't be going forward with anything.
And so just to clarify, though, this does not eliminate the rental registration program. That's going to continue as it is.
That's correct. Yeah, as soon as life turns back to some form of normality, we will get back on top of that program and try to get the rest of the applications processed and going forward. So hopefully, that'll happen within the next few months, but I think that's still to be determined.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Ray?
Sorry, coming late. I'm trying to navigate two screens, reading the, sorry, my apologies. But so the other positions that support rental registration are still in the budget. So the clerk's position, and was there a run through code as well?
No, the clerk's position was the big one, to try to go ahead and have somebody handling the paperwork side of things. Over the past few years, we have increased the code enforcement staffing, again, since and following the recession. So I think we're okay.
Okay, and we extended the deadline until when for rental registration?
I think it was, what, 30 or 60 days after the period when the state of emergency lapses? It was something like that. I can check.
Something variable. Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, Public Works Department, and I know, I'm sure we have.
Hold on one second. Councilor Clement?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, unmuted, I believe, yes. Just for purposes of clarification, there's been a lot of talk bandied about that we are eliminating positions, and I don't believe that to be the case. We are not funding them in the current budget, but we are not eliminating those positions. And I think it's important for the public to realize that the positions are not going away. We have just temporarily unfunded them or non-funded them.
Yeah, I'd like to add a little bit to that. I think one of the realities of this budget process is that there are so many uncertainties that we don't have a clue. We have a best guess, maybe, as to what the situation will be. So three, four, or five months from now, we may be in a much better position to determine what the situation is, whether it's considerably better. For example, should the federal government provide some significant financial support to the state, which would assist us on the revenue sharing side? Conversely, we don't know. It could be considerably worse. I'm kind of hoping that won't happen, because I think we've tried to be pretty responsible in our revenue estimates. So I think we'll be in a position a few months from now where we can take a look at things and potentially see where we stand, and if any adjustments can be made in the budget going forward. So I think this is as close as we could get to a no-harm budget, recognizing that we had to take some steps to bring down expenditures because of the revenue crunch we anticipate.
All right, thank you. That was a good point, Councilor Clement. And I would add to it that there is a possibility that if revenue shortages aren't what we're expecting, department heads will have the opportunity to come in, re-justify those positions, and I'm sure this council is going to be open to any position that's found to be justified and needed. So, all right, Ed, thank you.
Okay, the next department is Public Works, and I'm sure Dale's on the meeting as well. The first position is a project engineer. We actually have a couple of vacancies right at the moment in engineering. One is for the city engineering position, and one is for a project engineer of those two. We would prefer to fill the city engineering position because we think we will get more bang for the buck with someone who has more experience, more training. Frequently, our project engineers are pretty, you know, coming right out of school, have very limited experience. So by not filling this position, the biggest issue is, we do have a lot of capital projects coming up. We've cut back some on that because of the budget situation, but we still have some in the pipeline. The potential is that we may have to, at times, go out and contract for some engineering work that otherwise we would have done in-house. And Dale, if you want to comment on that, I see you're down there. And you're on mute.
Swung and missed with my mouse. Sorry about that. Ed, I think you hit most of it right on the head. I think there are, in addition to design, there are some environmental programs that we need to manage our MS4 and others, and that's just spread out over other engineers right now, which takes away from their design ability. There is, we're continuing to inspect our sewer and storm drain system. That's coming up with deficiencies that really need some engineering to evaluate those and make those repairs. So I think everything's right here, and in addition to what Ed had talked about earlier. And I think the priority is, as Ed described it.
Okay. The next position here is the engineering technician position, and that position is primarily responsible for things like maintaining our plants and inventories, right-of-ways, and control, making sure we have adequate record-keeping and clean records. I think that person also does a little bit of field inspection from time to time as projects are being done, and it's just basically that kind of support engineering position.
Why don't you just continue going right through them, and then we can comment.
The next one is an electrician vacancy. What we have here is the electrical superintendent is planning on retiring. We anticipate that probably someone on that crew will be promoted into that position, and that will leave this position vacant. To some extent, there's a lot of workload in that department, but it has shrunk a little bit in that we no longer have to take care of the upper A generating facility that's been taken offline. We've also gone to LED street lighting, which has helped. I think what Dale was trying to do with that extra time that he was picking up there was focusing our staff on things like traffic signals, walk, don't-walk lights at crosswalks and intersections, other kinds of electrical infrastructure that perhaps was not, that we were not as attentive to in the past as we perhaps should have been. So some of that may be delayed going forward, but I think Dale will continue to try to put an emphasis on dealing with some of those areas that have been neglected in the past. Dale, you might want to add something there?
I think, Ed, I think you hit it all. The only, I just might have characterized it as instead of a reduction, a shift. I think, you know, those traffic control devices and the pedestrian control devices or support devices are expanding all the time, becoming more complicated. People demand signals be integrated. We have a couple integration projects that are coming, and those all need maintenance. And I think it's, a lot of them are safety-related, and I know we've talked to most of the councils over the last year of failures and continued failures to the systems, and really, being proactive is important for our system, for our city to operate efficiently and safely. So, Ed, I think you hit it right on the head.
Yeah, and I think this is a situation where it's going to take, where we can look over this year to see how we're actually doing, given that there'll be a change in personnel, and there's been a change in focus. So I think we can track how we're doing, and we'll know better after, you know, six months a year, whether we're actually making progress with the current staffing, or whether we need to go back and revisit having this position filled again.
Agreed.
Next one's mechanics. We have, currently, we have three vacant mechanics. This has been a really difficult position for Public Works to recruit, because there's been a lot of competition in the market. We're looking for basically heavy equipment mechanics, and they are not all that frequent out there, and there's a lot of competition for them. So several of these positions have been vacant for a while. The downside here is that if we don't fill these positions, it's potential that we will have to send more work out to outside mechanics. Again, that frequently can cost more, but some of that obviously is going to depend on the nature and condition of the equipment we're dealing with, the kinds of problems that pop up in the coming year. We will be trying to fill the one vacant position, and I think, knowing Dale, he will keep close watch on how much we're spending with outside work so that we can do an effective cost analysis as this year proceeds.
I wonder, I mean, is there any chance we could put part of that out to bid?
Yeah, we absolutely can do a number of things, including put some things out to bid. We have some out now, but we absolutely could do in-service or on-call mechanics. I think the only thing that I'm a little bit nervous about, you know, I put these forward, given that we haven't been able to fill them, I'm actually hoping the economic turn might actually assist us in this one area. These mechanics not only deal with public works vehicles, which are emergency vehicles when it's snowing or raining, or there's a hurricane, but they also deal with the fire department and police department. And having at least a core base of people to be able to deal with those public service and public safety vehicles quickly is important, and we can see where we are by filling the one that's remaining. And I'll just be looking to my peers, both chiefs, to make sure we're servicing them as well, because it's just important to keep those vehicles on the road.
Yeah, and I would wonder, so like the police department vehicles, if we put just that out to bid, it would be interesting to see a cost analysis of if it's actually less expensive to do it that way. Obviously, they'd have to be, you know, a reputable mechanic service, which I have no doubt we could find that. But it would be interesting to see if there's actually a savings by doing that for some of the work.
I think a lot of it can. The routine stuff certainly can. The preventative maintenance can. I think it's the, today, a vehicle's down, or two vehicles down, get one back on the road quickly. We just got to retain that amount of responsiveness, but absolutely, a portion of it certainly can, and we'll be looking at that over the next year, absolutely.
And I'm guessing if we ever did do that, whoever won that bid would want to keep that bid. So I would assume they'd be fairly responsive.
If I were a businessperson, I would want to do that in this economy, yes.
Okay.
Last, Public Works position is an equipment operator position. This is one of the positions of skilled operators in our Public Works Department. They not only plow in the wintertime, but they also operate our larger, more complex equipment that's necessary to support other operations in the department year-round. So obviously, there'd be a potential impact on the snow operation. Some of that obviously depends on the nature of the winter that we have, and this last winter, we got pretty lucky. We had some snow, but we didn't have any of those huge storms, so we never really ran into huge problems. But again, it's one more minor cut in the, I shouldn't say minor, it's like another small cut, bleeding to death by a thousand cuts. Public Works has gone through this process for many years, so there's a potential for some impacts there. Plus, it may, at times, result in a shortage of equipment mechanics to support other projects in the department, particularly given that these tend to be our most senior folks. So there are other issues with them at times being available to work, given that they have more vacation time, and at times, given health or injury issues that they may face. So again, it's something I think we can live with. We've had some conversations, Dale and I, and Dennis and Heather, about if things really start getting difficult, looking at winter. There may be the possibility of finding funds within the Public Works budget to bring in some temporary or part-time, on-call plow operators, if necessary. So again, I think it's something that we can work around, at least for a period of time, till we see where the whole economic situation is going to end up.
Okay, any questions from councilors on any of the Public Works positions? Okay, Ms. Councilor Ray?
Will we be addressing the recreation programmer as part of Public Works?
That's next.
That's next.
Is that a different department, then?
It's not really a different department, but we've often treated it as a separate, standalone division.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so the recreation programmer. I think you all recognize that we have a relatively small recreation department, effectively pretty much three full-time employees, one of whom is largely a clerical support position. The recreation programmer has been responsible for pulling together a lot of the recreation programs, helping to staff them. We use an awful lot of part-time and seasonal employees to do that kind of work. So leaving this position open is probably the position that would have the potentially greatest mid-to-longer range impact. One of the issues here is, we do not know when we will be able to put our recreation programs back into business. So it is unlikely, in my opinion, that we will have the ability to operate much in the way of a recreation program through this summer. It's possible, if things improve, that we may be able to get things started again in the fall, but it's hard to predict when this is all going to happen. There just doesn't seem to be any guarantees, watching the numbers, at least in Maine. It seems like they were going up pretty quickly early on, and then they leveled off, and we were kind of expecting them to go down, but we haven't really seen things really start to drop off yet, so it's hard to say how long the situation is going to last. So there's no question but that this would have some impact on our ability to provide a recreation program, and it's something we may want to keep an eye on, particularly as the situation improves, where we might be able to take a look or get serious about restarting our recreation program. I think it might be difficult for just the two staff members, two full-time staff members to reintegrate or reignite an entire recreation program.
And so I'm guessing.
I mean, it's also one of those funny situations. Right at this moment, if we hired somebody in that position, there's not a whole lot that's going to be done. I mean, this is the, these are the kinds of positions that you see in places like Augusta, where they're furloughing them and laying them off because there's no work. Issue is, how long is that going to happen, and how much in advance of restarting things? Would it be nice to have somebody come back on staff? Dale, I don't know if you want to add anything to that?
Again, Ed, I think you hit it all, and it's just the timing for a lot of these, and this is one of them. Equipment operator and any of them, just the lead time of getting somebody in and up to speed. I think the balance between having somebody now and getting them up to speed, and when the programs are going to start, are all key elements that Ed pointed out.
And I'll also say that, worst-case scenarios, if our scenario is too optimistic, this is the kind of position that's very difficult to justify, when you're looking at if we have to get into significant layoffs over and above the positions that we're not funding. It just gets tough. How do you make choices between this and police department and Public Works that has snow plowing and other responsibilities and others that need to? It's, and I hate to say that, because I'm really, you know, I think in general, our rec people have done a great job with the very limited resources that we give them. It's, to some extent, it's amazing that they've managed to produce as much as they have over the last few years. I hate to see it backsliding, but this is one's tempted-to-say, once-in-a-lifetime situation we're facing.
One, I think recreation to this council is important. I think we all recognize the value that they bring. I'm okay with this position being postponed at this point, because even if in two months we were able to start opening programs, it would be a very slow ramp up. It isn't like they would be able to kick in all the programs that are listed in a matter of a few weeks. And I think, you know, hopefully, we're all going to have tough discussions, you know, in future budgets about recreation, and, you know, either we're going to commit to a recreation department or not. I'm hoping, and I'm thinking we have a council that is going to do that.
Yeah, I was going to just mention, prior to this all hitting, I was actually hopeful that we may even have been coming into the council this year with some recommendation for expansions of these programs. You know, we had some discussions with Jason and Dale and Dennis about that, because we think there is a, clearly a need for programs, clearly a need for programs for individuals who don't have the resources to go to summer camps and to do other things that, you know, my son, for example, had the opportunity to do. So it's just that the world changed, and when the world changes, you have to reshuffle your priorities and where you want to go.
Councilor Jalinas?
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm a strong supporter of the recreation program of our community. I think we've done some wonderful things, and I totally understand that some of what's going on is beyond our control, especially when we think about the long, when I say long-term, I mean, the summer effects of this pandemic. So the reality is, we just don't have the answers to that. We don't know if that's even going to be reality. I hear that, Administrator Barrett. When you talk about that program, I heard you say that there's a clerical, there was three people, one of which was the programmer, but then you talked about another full-time person being clerical. Can you describe for me what that third person does? And then my second part to this question is, let's just say, best-case scenario, the sky opens and everything's great, and we're able to do some form of recreation. Does that mean that, like, when I think about the recreation, I think about Kennedy Pool, I think about like some of the summer camps, would it mean that none of that would happen without a programmer, or would some of those responsibilities be disseminated to the third person that I'm asking for a description on?
Dale, I might ask you or Jason to try to answer some of that. You're on mute again.
I can start, and if we pull Jason forward, he could probably fill in. I do think we will have some programs. In fact, we're going to be talking about, Dennis and I and Jason have talked a little bit about doing some virtual programs with the library and trying to keep recreation alive in the meantime, so that it still has a presence and a reputation in Lewiston, so that we don't lose that, and we can get some traction. We may be able to, if the pool could come back, although I think that's one of those things that Ed mentioned today. I just, I'm not sure I see it happening this summer with where we're headed with looking at the governor's plan and, you know, what she's trying to respond to. So, but I do think. So, but I do think we could bring some, some back. It just wouldn't be what Ed and I and Dennis and Jason had envisioned earlier this year.
All right, so I see. Who's speaking?
Well, that was Dale. I just said, I didn't know if Jason wanted to add something that it looks like.
Yeah, I'm reckoning, I'm just acknowledging that he's here, but I'm going to go to Counselor Ray and then we'll allow, give Jason time to chime in here. Counselor Ray?
Thank you. So this one is very hard for me. You know, I was in support, in support of expanding recreation programming and staffing in FY20. There weren't, there wasn't enough support to move those positions forward. And so there could have been even more kind of up for discussion tonight if those had moved forward last budget cycle. And knowing the seniors and age area agencies work and that youth in this community need a place to recreate, but I think the comment about timing is very salient. We are looking at across the board, positions that are vacant because the alternative is positions that are already filled with humans who work for the city. And it would be a disservice to, to examine those positions differently, I think. And so again, this is super hard to, to just go along with. So I'm stating my piece now that this is the part I disagree with, but it's not going to stop me from supporting this plan because it is in, it's more of a utilitarian view of things at this point.
Okay, thank you. Jason, is there anything you'd like to add?
Hey, everybody. I just, to answer Counselor Jalinas' question, the other person is me. So a lot of the work that I do is we, we handle all the field scheduling for all activities in Lewiston. We've got the armory building. Once that's open, we've got that full from usually, you know, if we get back to normal business, we've got that full from October till about May. Handling just the scheduling alone for those is, is pretty busy. And then summertime, when we had the program coordinator and myself working on programs, there was too much for us to do last year. We, we overcommitted and I think part of the reason he moved on is because he was a little burnt out from the, the amount of stuff that we put on his plate. So the, the amount of things we put forward last year was, was too much for us to handle. That's one of the reasons we were hopeful to get more people to, to support us this year, but we understand that the situation is going on.
Thank you, Mr. Henken.
Thank you. Counselor Khalid?
Thank you. I think most of my questions was answered by Jason, but can you just tell me again, if this position is not built, what, what departments or activities will be put in pause, especially for the upcoming summer?
Probably, Jason, why don't you take that one? Probably, I was going to say probably at this point for this coming up, this coming summer, we've probably lost most everything. But Jason?
I would, I would say pretty much everything for this summer. We're going through the, the planning process to see if we can get T-Ball and McCrossan to stay within everybody's guidelines and restrictions. So that's, we're just going through the process. This, the program coordinator is heavily involved with all of the training and hiring and running summer camp. So if we go a full year without this position, this will affect next year's summer camp because we do most of the planning, we're pretty much done planning by now usually for summer camp. So if this position isn't here next year, then we're going to struggle with summer camp 2021. They handle all the basketball, which has grown immensely the past few years. They handle our in-house soccer, tennis, they handle, there's a bunch of programs. I think there's a list in there that is directly tied to this position.
All right, I see. No, go ahead, Ed.
Yeah, again, I, I would suggest that this, that depending how things go, that this would be a position you take another hard look at if at all possible later in the year, once we have a better feeling for the situation here. I mean, it's, it's absolutely stunning when, when you look at what different municipalities are doing and the estimates they're coming up with. Nobody clearly has a crystal ball because you see some communities that are looking at, I think I've seen as much as a 60% or 70% reduction in revenue sharing from the state. Others are estimating 15%. So there's a huge range and disparity. If we miss that revenue sharing cut by, in our estimate is about 45%. If we miss that by half, you're talking a considerable increase in the, in the revenues that would come into the city next year that could potentially be looked at, although I'll again warn everybody and Heather can probably, was probably ready to strangle me at this point, that we also have to be aware of the undesignated fund balance situation. But I think of all the positions, this is the one that has the most impact on a program. And part of then the question becomes how critical is that program? What's your priority for that program? So hopefully that helps at least give the context for, for the situation here.
Right. All right. Any other questions from councilors or department heads that have any comments? Okay, if not, we'll move on to workshop agenda item B, elected officials.
You missed one. We have, we have the finance department yet.
Oh, all right.
And we do need to give Heather her chance too here. This is one that everybody kind of goes hit at because it's one of those behind the scenes positions that does a lot of clerical accounting, billing, making sure people get paid, all of those kinds of things that help keep finance department operating. So a lot of times this isn't given the same priority, but I will tell you that over the last few years, the finance department has been stressed just trying to keep up with their routine workload. For some reason, we've seen a big increase in people standing in line up there and there's been a lot of paperwork that goes along with that. So, you know, trying to make sure that billings, payments, invoices and other things are done accurately and on a timely basis is important because I'll guarantee you, if we stop paying people on time, you, you will all hear about it. So paying people is an important function of city government. So Heather, you probably know more of the details, so I'll let you say anything else you want to add to that.
No, I agree with the summary. The biggest issue is typically we have, I think there's half a dozen plus or minus maybe two or three ACD agents that handle all the inbound calls to City Hall when somebody actually wants to talk to a human instead of just handling different extensions. This position serves as one of those ACD agents. And then the sidewalk occupancy permits, that's the primary position for this, which means somebody in the office is going to have to assume this role. And that is, that's a legacy tax that came up when the public works business office consolidated in the treasury office. So those, other than what Ed had already mentioned, those would, what I, would be task I would highlight.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from councilors? Okay, for real this time, we're going to move to workshop agenda item B, elected official priorities for 2020 and 2021. I asked Ed to get this on the agenda tonight because I really think we should try to identify at minimum one, two or three goals that we can start getting some workshops scheduled for. One, I think it'll help us in our response to recovery once this pandemic shifts. But two, I don't want to waste a whole year not working on, on some of our more priority goals. I'm going to, I, I think it's been clear through discussion and councilors, you can correct me, that economic development and policing are two of our, our biggest priorities. Is that accurate? I see lots of nodding. So would we like to get these two goals worked shop? Or would we like to add a third goal? Counselor Jalinas?
Thank you. I, I do agree that those, those are different, I mean, are important goals for sure. But if there was a way that we could embed the idea of some messaging and imaging, because I think those, those two things tie very closely into economic development as well as even, you know, the second goal, policing. And I, I feel like it's not all separate. So if there's a way we could embed some of that, I would, I would like to see that happen as well.
No, I would agree. I think that's good. Ed, could you kind of incorporate those, that into both?
Well, I think we could incorporate those both into both, but I've been also asked Dennis to hop in here because we also have the communication plan, marketing effort that's been underway and that is getting to the point where it's going to be bringing stuff forward.
So why don't we just make that a third goal and we'll work.
That's what I would recommend. Dennis, you want to just bring people up to date on that?
Yeah, I actually, I think that's a great idea to add that as a third workshop. I think we are nearing that point where Warp and Weft, who's a contractor that we've awarded the, the business to, I think is ready or close to ready to, to having that discussion with you as a council and they've asked for that at some point in near future. So I think it makes a lot of sense. And then just to your points before, I, I think the two goals of economic development and policing image is, it's embedded in there naturally. I just think it absolutely, success in those areas will improve the image and, and messaging overall, so.
Okay, good, thank you. Counselor Clement?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I concur wholeheartedly. I think all three things go hand in hand, like the old love and marriage song, you know, can't have one without the other. Image depends upon policing. Economic development, I do believe, depends on people coming in from outside wanting to see a safe environment. They look and if they see problems with crime rates and various things, then they're going to look elsewhere. So I think we have to work on all three together. But of all the goals, all of which I think are very worthwhile, I think those three stand head and shoulders above everything else on the list. And I think we need to get to work on those because hopefully sooner or later this mess around us is going to dissipate and we can get to work and do some positive things. Thank you.
Thank you. And Counselor Pen Gill shortly, go ahead, Ed, real quick.
Yeah, I was just going to, going to mention one other thing to keep your eye on, and I don't know that it necessarily has to be in the top goals, but one of the things that bit us coming out of the last recession was the housing problem in that there was an awful lot of abandonment. And that created all kinds of code issues and all kinds of fire prevention issues and all kinds of, I think, image issues to the community that really hurt us. There is a potential that coming out of this, we're going to see the same thing. You know, I know that there are landlords that are hurting now. We're trying to do some things to help them. The state's trying to do some things to help them. But I'm concerned if this goes on too long, that a lot of our property owners are going to find themselves in a position where the bank, to say, I was talking to one multi-family, multi-unit owner today who was saying, yeah, the bank's willing to give me a forbearance, but they're telling me on month 90, I want everything caught up. You know, and, and well, maybe we'll talk about it then. Maybe we'll track it on the end, but right now, what you're going to sign is a balloon note that on, on the 90th day, past the date that we agree on, you're going to have to concurrent with everything. So don't, again, I don't know that it's a top priority, but I do think it's something you might want to have the housing committee keep a close eye on along with staff so that we can start doing things like tracking, again, like tracking foreclosures, tracking abandoned properties and maybe trying to find ways to be much more aggressive, much quicker before that problem gets out of control like it did last time.
Okay. Thank you, Ed. Counselor Pettingill and then Counselor Joy.
So I just wanted to echo some of the comments from Counselor Jalinas and Counselor Clement that, you know, policing and economic, at this point, economic recovery is definitely the, the two foremost things on, on my agenda for us to tackle. And then aesthetics, you know, like has already been said, definitely factors in, into all of that because it's how the outside world perceives us and why they want to come here and live here and eat here and shop here and do business here. To go, go along kind of with the, the housing thing, what happened after the crash happened after the crash, but it, it's what we allowed to happen now. You know, we have to have that, that positivity and move forward because we've already seen what happens when we let that lack. So we need to, to keep, keep what, what we can and, yeah, move forward.
Right, and I, you know, I'd like to add, if we have a good, robust economic development plan and a law enforcement plan that involves the community, that will also help housing in the end in the long run. Counselor LaJoy? You have to unmute? Thank you.
There we go. I agree with everything that was said. And however, I was looking down the list and the infrastructure somehow should fit into that possibly the economic development section. I think it's important that we have a, a good infrastructure as far as streets, cities, our streets and our sidewalks and probably public works should take a, a hold on to that and maybe give us some ideas on that particular area to see if it helps us out greatly in the infrastructure.
Yeah, and I'm, you know, and I'll add real quick, just because we're grabbing two of these right off to do some, you know, some workshops, that doesn't mean we're, we're disregarding our other goals.
Right.
It's just so that we're not sitting here for six months not working on any goals is why I was hoping to bring this forward. So that's a really good point because infrastructure is important to our community and our constituents, especially when it comes to potholes and sidewalks. Counselor Ray?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to concur with my colleagues that I think these are good first priorities to start with, of course, built upon what we hear from there and moving along those topics. The other thing that I just wanted to advocate for quickly was the review of committees, commissions and boards, because I think as we navigate through each goal, we're going to maybe delegate some work to committees, commissions and boards and just making sure we have what we need seems a critical part of that to me.
Good, thank you. Counselor Pettingill and then Counselor Jensen?
I just wanted to point out too, that I really appreciate the mayor's direction with really focusing on only a couple of our goals. As we've seen, you can put together any sort of list that you want to focus on, have any number of goals that you want to focus on, but realistically, once you get over five, it's almost unmanageable. So I really appreciate the, the direction and the leadership to say, hey, let's take, you know, these one or two, you know, or, or three issues and actually to add one that was thrown out today, to be able to get to focus on and get some boots on the ground and really start doing something to come out of this once, you know, once the, once we're out of it.
All right, thank you. Counselor Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm certainly comfortable with the priorities that we're outlining here. I think it's exactly the kind of, it represents what we discussed at our retreat as well as what we're currently facing right now. And so I just want to agree with everyone about that. I mean, also just thinking about it, I know I've talked a lot about image and identity as a city. It's still very important to me. I know all the goals are intertwined, but honestly, when we think about image, I think that really could be incorporated into economic development, not just tied in along with it, but as, as part of it itself. Because I mean, the goal of increasing our city's image is to boost our economy, increase the tax base, let us do more so we can have more things like parts of the recreation budget, you know, more, more programs that our people deserve. And I know I've, I've talked a little bit to a few of you, but I'm thinking when we come back to the new normal, we shouldn't come back to the old, you know, the old way of things. This is a good fresh start for us as a city. We should take advantage of this, this moment, this opportunity to reinvent ourselves as a city. So I'm really excited to hear what the consultants Warp and Weft have to say and how we want to decide what we want to be as a city. We're, we're no longer a former, you know, mill town. We're going to be something new here. So whether that means focusing on certain areas of the city, like certain corridors where people drive into the city, you know, we're not going to change minds by just telling people Lewiston's great. They'll say, hey, Lewiston's great, let's go. They're going to come here no matter what. It's the second biggest city in the state. It's a service center. People will come here and the more they come here and the more they see that, hey, this is really nice. Oh, I like this street. Oh, this has kept up really well. Yeah, maybe I can move here, raise a family. Those are the kind of things that are really going to boost our city. Yeah, maybe I can move here, raise a family. Those are the kind of things that are really going to boost our city. And so when we talk about image and identity, I, I think it's absolutely critical as part of economic development. So I thank you, Mr. Mayor, for making that a priority and for my couns, fellow counselors as well for.
Yeah, thank you. And you, you are spot on on everything you just said. And I could see the nice thing about Zoom and I, I'd much rather get back to regular meetings, but when you see and everybody nodding heads and giving thumbs up, that means you rocked on that one. And I, you know, I just want to add, and I, Ed, I see your hand. Just give me one sec. You know, every department head or staff that's watching this meeting, the most important thing we can do as a city council is to find ways to bring new growth to our community because we live on this tight budget every single year. I've went through six years of tight budgets. If we can work hard at economic development and find new growth, that brings new revenue to our community and it doesn't mean we're increasing taxes to get it. That's going to be the key to giving the police chief, the manpower he needs, the equipment he's needs. It's the key to the fire department, getting the manpower and equipment they need and on and on and on. And hopefully there won't be departments like the rec department that get, you know, kicked so hard that they're, you know, they're on life support to try to provide programming. That's my goal and I think it's all of your goals. And I just ask the department heads to be part of that. Because if economic development is on, isn't on every single department head's mind and, and them thinking about it and how they can help us to improve economic development in our community. They're, they're not quite understanding the roles that we all play as city councillors and employees of, of the city. All right. Sorry for that dragged on jabber, but Ed, go ahead. You're muted.
I just wanted to add that there's a whole theory of economic development that's developed over the last 10 years or 15 years or so, which says that one of the biggest emphasis of an economic development effort should be to attract people, not necessarily to attract employers. You, you know, not to say you shouldn't go after employers, but if you have a community that attracts people to move into it, to live there, to shop there, that is then going to create business and business opportunity. So I think it's an important element of any economic development effort. And certainly it, it can be, it can pay off in dramatic ways. Like we said before, if we could just get someone more of the people who work in Lewiston to live in Lewiston, that would be a tremendous positive economic impact on this entire community.
So I agree with that. Community development is, is a key. I'm not sure, you know, I, I just, I still believe we've got to get some new growth in here just to get at a level where, where we're comfortably, comfortably providing for our department heads. But I've also read, you know, some articles on that and it's so true. If we get people who want to live here, the businesses will naturally come. So, all right.
Businesses will, not only businesses naturally come, but some of those people will actually start businesses.
Oh, good point.
And, you know, so you get things created from, and I agree with you. It doesn't mean you don't go after other businesses or other developments. Certainly you do. But I think long-term, stronger development comes, the stronger the community is, the stronger the community seems, that the more people see it as, as a, and a desirable community. The, the easier that whole task becomes.
I agree. And if we look like a vibrant community, we will be a vibrant community. Counselor Pettingill.
It's important to note too, that a lot, a lot of those same studies point out too, that when a community can grow businesses or incubate businesses and entrepreneurs, they invest in the community more, they invest in the people more, they stay around longer in downturns and situations, not like this, because this is, this is so new, but you know, in situations where, you know, everybody's down. They're, they're the ones that, that hold everything together. So the more we can do to attract the people that will stay here and grow those businesses, that the better off we'll be, you know, for forever.
Yeah, good point. So what I'll do is within a week or so, Ed and I will, will discuss, you know, the workshops and what they might look like. And then I'll, I'll reach out to individual councils, just to kind of run them by and see if they feel that that's the direction they'd like to see the workshop going. In the meantime, just be giving it some thought. And if then, if you folks want to throw in some comments to me and Ed, or Ed and I beforehand, please don't hesitate to do that. Is there any other comments or questions in reference to our priorities? Okay. If not, our workshop will be concluded. Its councillors could turn off their video and their voice. And we'll come back in about five minutes. Okay, everybody. Welcome back. So I'm just going to go over some of the previous announcements. So good evening, everybody, and welcome to the May 5, 2020 Lewiston City Council Business Meeting. This session will be conducted remotely and members will only participate electronically. Public comment on any item apparent on the agenda may be sent to publiccomment@lewistonmain.gov prior to or during the meeting and all comments will be received and forwarded to the city council. For comments regarding the bubble, the budget public hearing, members of the public may call area code 207-513-3017 to offer comments on the budget. Members of the public who are logged into the meeting online can also make a comment when they're invited to do so by raising their hand. This button usually can be found at the bottom of your screen. Once they are acknowledged, their microphone will be unmuted and they will be invited to make a brief comment. Before making comments, please just state your name and the town of residence. And councillors also are asked to raise their hand to make comments. Okay, agenda. The first item is an update by the Deputy City Administrator regarding COVID-19 actions over the past week or two. Dennis?
Evening, Mayor and councillors. Just a couple of quick updates here. Staff are working on, what we're working on right now. On to return staff to their offices that are ones that are working remotely. So how can we do that in terms of meeting all the social distancing requirements as well as the plans for reopening City Hall to the public as well? In some fashion, whether that be by appointment by only or, you know, limited, limiting the numbers of folks in. But we are working through that and anticipate some updates on that and maybe some finalizing of those plans to be able to share with you in the coming meetings. On Thursday, staff from our economic development and some other staff throughout the city will be joining a Q and A session with our, with the Commissioner from the Department of Economic Development. As you can imagine, this is a, important for us as we've been discussing in the workshop, economic development is a very critical piece of our recovery and I think staff are very focused and I think that'll be a, a good session to engage them on. Economic development overall, our staff continue the outreach efforts, have been working with a variety of different businesses locally, whether it just be answering questions, again, pointing them in a direction of resources. And I know our staff have been working hard in those areas and will continue to do that as we, as we move forward. Just in the, in terms of events, we have had a couple of cancellations. I'm sure you've heard. But just for everyone's benefit, the Balloon Festival did cancel their event for this year as well as Baxter Brew Fest has canceled their event that, that was due in June. So our other events still remain on the schedule as far as Liberty Festival, the bicentennial parade, the Dempsey Challenge. No, no changes on those at this point, but we'll keep you posted on that. And that's concludes the, the highlights for right now.
Okay, thank you. Now just gonna, I'm gonna add one thing to that for the council. Just Ed and I had a brief discussion today about, you know, when we're going to end the state of emergency for the city of Lewiston. And we'll be discussing that again in the near future, but we do anticipate that probably is coming, will be brought up to the council in relatively short order at some point. Ed, would you agree with that and anything you want to add?
Oh, I think that's pretty much it. I mean, obviously the, the city has predominantly been following the lead of the state government on this. So I think we can reasonably consider ending our state of emergency and Mayor and I will talk about that and, and get back to you all.
All right. Good. Thank you. And Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll for attendance.
Sure. Counselor from Word One.
Present.
Word Two.
Present.
Word Three.
Present.
Word Four.
Present.
Word Five.
Present.
Word Six.
Present.
Word Seven.
Present.
We'll also note for the record, Mayor Kayer is present as well as the City Administrator, the Deputy City Administrator and the Finance Director. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next item is the acceptance of the minutes. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Clement.
I move that we accept the minutes as printed.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Clement, seconded by Counselor Ray. Madam Clerk.
Counselor from Word Two.
Yes.
Word Three.
Yes.
Word Four.
Yes.
Word Five.
Yes.
Word Six.
Yes.
Word Seven.
Yes.
And Word One.
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Okay. We are now in the, we are now in the public comment period. Any member of the public may make comments regarding issues pertaining to the Lewiston City Government. And we'll just check with Dennis. Any hands raised or Madam Clerk, do you see anything?
Mayor, councillors, no, no hands are raised right now in the attendee list. I do, I will note, we did receive six emails today through our public comment email, all related to the Recreation Department position that was just worked up, you know, in terms of the vacant position. It's open. And that's all we've received so far at this point.
Okay, thank you. You know, just for the public's information, we're, we're going to be kind of a little bit freer with our public comment period. So if anything comes in, we'll be notified and then at the earliest convenience, we'll allow that comment if it's outside of the agenda. Okay, Madam Clerk, roll call votes.
Yes, all roll call votes for this meeting will begin with the councillor of Word Two.
All right. Thank you. And the gender item number one.
Item number one, public hearing on the renewal application for a special amusement permit for live entertainment for the Ramada Lewiston Hotel and Conference Center, 490 Pleasant Street. Requested action to grant a special amusement permit for live entertainment to the Ramada Lewiston Hotel and Conference Center, 490 Pleasant Street.
I'll move.
Okay.
Moved by Counselor LaJoy, seconded by Counselor Clement. And are there any public comments that we can see? Okay. And again, we're going to be a little bit freer with comments even on this subject. So if something comes in in a moment or two, we'll get back to that. With that in mind, I'll close the public hearing. And could you call the roll?
Sure. Counselor from Word Two.
Yes.
Word Three.
Yes.
Word Four. Counselor from Word Four, your mic is muted.
There we go. Yes.
Thank you, Counselor. Word Five.
Yes.
Word Six.
Yes.
Word Seven.
Yes.
And Word One.
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Agenda item number two.
Item number two, public hearing in first passage for rezoning the properties at 949 College Street, 2 East Merrill Road, 4 East Merrill Road, 6 East Merrill Road, 8 East Merrill Road, 10 East Merrill Road and portions of 1 East Merrill Road, 3 East Merrill Road and 5 East Merrill Road from the Rural Agricultural District to the Low Density Residential District. Requested action that the proposed amendment to rezone the properties at 249 College Street, 2 East Merrill Road, 4 East Merrill Road, 6 East Merrill Road, 8 East Merrill Road, 10 East Merrill Road and portions of 1 East Merrill Road, 3 East Merrill Road and 5 East Merrill Road from the from the Rural Agriculture District to the Low Density Residential District received first passage by a roll call vote, and to continue the hearing to the next regularly scheduled city council meeting.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by councillor Jensen, seconded by councillor Pettingill, and I'll open the public hearing.
And if I could just mention, Dennis, I think this is when we need to unmute Doug and David Hediger and other folks, I believe. David Hediger, you should be all set to talk.
All right, can people hear me?
David, if we could, just kind of a brief intro into this?
All right, yeah. So the petitioner, David Langelier, has submitted a petition to rezone all the properties that Kathy has listed off out there. This is a subdivision that was split zoned many years ago. There's an exhibit in your packet, I believe it's Exhibit A. Exhibit A that pretty, shows pretty well exactly the properties that are impacted. There is a zoning line that goes down the middle of that now, if you look at that. A number of the properties on the right side were split zoned back in 1988. I don't think it was really taken into consideration that there was a subdivision out there, and that there was this common scheme of development already occurring. So the petitioner is doing two things here. One, he's looking to change the zoning to LDR to relax the setbacks for development on his property. And doing that, he would also rezone the other properties in this subdivision all to LDR, so it maintains that common scheme of development. Again, if this was done appropriately, probably 1988, the zoning line would be where we're talking about doing tonight. This corrects things for people in that neighborhood who have split zone properties, and it'll also provide the applicant the ability to have a smaller setback consistent with some of the other lots in the subdivision. I believe the petitioner, David Langelier, and his representative, Emma Roy, are here as well. And if they would like to make comments, I'm sure they could have that opportunity.
Okay, thank you. And do you have a recommendation, Dave?
Yes, absolutely. I would believe the council should support this. The Planning Board also voted unanimously, unanimously to support the change as well.
All right, thank you. Mr. Langelier, do you, do you have any comments you'd like to make to the council?
Um, I just, I would like to say that I was born and raised here in Lewiston. I work in the community, support the community, have multiple properties in the community. My family's been supporting and contributing to this community, community for generations. I want to continue to support the community by continuing to live here. Allowing me the opportunity to resolve this issue will help me do just that.
All right, thank you, and thank you for your commitment over the years. Ms. Roy, do you have any comments for the council?
I think that Dave Hediger did a good, good job summarizing the issues, essentially just getting this subdivision back where it should be. But I'm available if any of you have any specific questions that I can address.
All right, good, thank you very much. And do we see any other public comments in reference to this agenda item, Dennis or Kathy?
No.
Okay, with none shown, any questions or comments from the council? Okay, call the roll, please.
Councillor from Ward 2.
Yes.
Ward 3.
Yes.
Ward 4.
Yes.
Ward 5.
Yes.
Ward 6.
Yes.
Ward 7.
Yes.
Ward 1.
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of 7 to 0.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Langelier and Ms. Roy.
Thank you.
Okay. Agenda item number 3.
Item number 3, resolve amending the City of Lewiston Annual Action Plan and Proposed Budget for the Community Development Block Grant Program for the period of July 1, 2019 to June 30, 2020. Requested action to, 1, hold a public hearing on this item, and then to, 2, to approve the resolve amending the Community Development Block Grant Program Citizen Participation Plan.
Okay, thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by councillor Khalid, seconded by councillor Ray. So Link, I'm assuming that is linked with us yet? Okay, and if we could remove Mr. Langelier from the panelists? Okay, so Link, I'm assuming that this agenda item is closely tied into 4, 5, and 6, correct?
That is correct. We have a whole slew of things that are all interrelated, and I apologize for the complexity of trying to follow that in the council agenda packets, but these all dovetail together.
Okay, so if you could just try to, you know, in your presentation, speak of all those agenda items, if that's possible.
I will do my best. And to just take a very quick aside, before we get started on this, wanted to thank the council for their, their support for economic development, recognizing all the very support of it. But I want to say, the rest of my department heads, I think, already share that, that goal of really moving this community forward. With all that's going on with this, this unprecedented time, the Planning Department has been incredibly busy. They had three solar projects that were approved last week. I had conversations this week with another solar project in the wings. I talked to CMP on the Clean Energy Connect project that's moving forward. There's a lot of activity down in the mills. So rest assured, even though there's a downturn, there does seem to be quite a bit of activity. Let me set that aside at this point, and note that, yes, as, as you had on the agenda, there are a lot of changes that are required by this. All of them are gonna require public hearings. I, I want to thank my staff. They really worked double time over the last month or so, trying to sift through all the requirements that need to be done. You know, Jane Yocum, who's been with the city, should have looked it up. She, she's been with us at least a decade. She's retiring in two weeks. So Jane did not have an easy cruise to retirement. She has been right in the thick of this. Heidi McCarthy has been working very closely with her, Misty Parker have been working. So they have done enormous work over the last few weeks pulling this all together. The first thing we need to address is the Citizen Participation Plan, and making those amendments allows us to take the dollars that we more recently received under the CARES Act. Let me back up a moment. The city is a CDVG entitlement community. This year, we had received $915,413 that we went through a process to allocate earlier this year. I sent out a council agenda. I would have workshopped it with you in mid, in March 26th. That was just, I think that was the first council meeting where you decided not to meet in public. So it was just a memo. You didn't really get to hear it from me. Just after that, the federal government passed the CARES Act that is gonna give the city an additional $538,518, also of CDVG dollars, which need to be spent specifically to address the issues of the pandemic. To get that money on the streets more quickly, we need to amend the Citizen Participation Plan. The changes were required under that, and I have got it was in the memo, but to try to summarize it under our current participation plan, excuse me. Agenda under my arm here. Yeah, okay, so the changes of substance that are in the Citizen Participation Plan is the RLF program that is currently, has money coming in. We have to put it right back into the RLF. This change will allow us to actually record it either as revolving loan fund program income or as regular program income. If it's recorded as regular loan program, excuse me, RLF program income, we can't use it for grant funding. When we were talking to all the businesses when this first hit, what we heard is we don't need more loans, we really need grant support. So by making that change to the Citizen Participation Plan, it allows us to take that program income that is coming in from past loans made, put it into our regular program income, and we can put those dollars out as grants. That'll, that'll be transpiring over the next year. It's not that we can take all that money that's already been repaid, it's only new payments coming back in. But that's one change. Second change is recognizing that the CDVG target area, which is Census Traxx 201 through 204, that's basically from the river up to East Avenue, over to Bates College, over behind the hospital, and back down to, down near the riverfront island area. Those are the four census tracts that is also recognized as a neighborhood revitalization strategy area. That gives us greater flexibility and have the CDVG dollars are allowed to be used. Another big change which would help is we're going to go from having public notice published in the Sun Journal to allowing it to be done by using social media and the city's website. That'll be a significant saver of time and money. And I think the outreach will be very, very similar. I think folks are getting more and more well-versed in looking to those sources to find out what's going on in the city. Specifically related to the, this pandemic we're in right now, public comment has become complicated. I think we've gotten better at it each week, participating and watching these council meetings. I think the opportunities to participate have gotten better. But the Citizen Participation Plan has been amended to allow sort of remote public comment. Public hearings, we often have multiple public hearings that are required for various things we do under HUD. The plan is being amended to note and just clarify that those don't necessarily need to be city council meetings. It could be a planning board meeting, it could be an independent meeting that is held specifically as a public hearing. We'll often get that with Brownfield grant dollars, where we'll have a public hearing, and specifically to talk about it, independent of the city council. And then the last change to the participation plan would be really what's been precipitated by the last month and a half or so is the emergency provisions being changed that allow us to more quickly get these dollars turned around without going through this long public participation process. If HUD said, I think our plan, it's anywhere from 10 to 30 days worth of public comment or public notice, HUD allowed just five, five days. So we'd be able to adopt that by amending the Citizen Participation Plan, and it would also give the City Administrator the authority to sign off on the changes as opposed to the council, if the council seats the authority to them. In a nutshell, those are all the, all the changes of substance on that particular item.
Okay. So I'll open the public hearing portion of this. Do, do we have, is there a motion on, on the table already, Kathy?
We do, yes, have a motion on the table. It was moved by the councillor from Ward 1, seconded by the councillor from Ward 3.
Okay, so the public hearing portion is, is now open. Does, any questions or comments from the council? And just double checking, are there any public comments that we can see? And again, that public comment will be opened through to the next couple of agenda items. Okay, with not, no public comments at this point, I'll close the public hearing. And if there are no further questions from the council, I'll call the roll.
Councillor from Ward 2.
Yes.
Ward 3.
Yes.
Ward 4.
Yes.
Ward 5.
Yes.
Ward 6.
Yes.
Ward 7.
Yes.
Ward 1.
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of 7 to 0.
Okay, thank you. Agenda item number 4?
Item number 4, resolve amending the 2015-2019 CDVG Consolidated Plan and FYY19 Action Plan. Requested action to hold a public hearing and approve the resolve amending the 2015 through 2019 CDVG Consolidated Plan and FYY19 Action Plan.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by councillor Ray, seconded by councillor LaJoy. Link, anything specific to this?
Uh, yeah, just a, I know we have a long night, so I'll try to cover this as quickly as possible. When those CARES Act dollars came in, that additional 518, 538,000, again, to get those dollars on the street, we have to amend plans that are due to expire on July 1st. But this will allow us to get the dollars out.
Okay, thank you. And I'll open the public hearing. Are there any questions or comments during this period that councillors may have? Okay, I don't see any, any public comments.
Nothing, nothing has come in.
Okay, thank you. With that, I'll close the public hearing and just open it to councillors one more time before calling the roll. Seeing nothing, call the roll, please.
Councillor from Ward 2.
Yes.
Ward 3.
Yes.
Ward 4.
Yes.
Ward 5.
Yes.
Ward 6.
Yes.
Ward 7.
Yes.
And Ward 1.
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of 7 to 0.
Okay, thank you. Agenda item number 4, is that correct?
Item number 5, I believe.
Thank you.
Yeah, item number 5, resolve approving and adopting the 2020-2024 CDVG Consolidated Plan, FFY2020 CDVG Action Plan, and FFY20 Home Action Plan. Requested action to hold a public hearing and then to approve the resolve approving and adopting the 2020 through 2024 CDVG Consolidated Plan, FFY2020 CDVG Action Plan, and FFY20 Home Action Plan.
Okay, thank you. Link?
Okay, yes.
Oh, do you want a motion, Mr. Mayor?
Excuse me?
Would you like a motion?
Yep, that would be fine.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
All right, moved by councillor Ray, seconded by councillor Khalid. Go ahead, Link.
Yeah, I'm sorry, this one will take a little more time because this is approval of a five-year consolidated plan. Under HUD requirements, we need to sort of lay out for the coming five years how our CDVG dollars will be invested. That's done through a public process. They basically need to meet one of three national objectives. Either benefit low to moderate income people, aid in the prevention of slums or blight, or meet an urgent need. And interestingly, urgent need is the national objective that is never used. But that is what we're using on some of this CARES Act funding. Just some of the, some of the seminars and webinars I've had with, with HUD regulators, that's, they're like dusting it off and saying, gosh, we haven't used this in years. Usually it's used for tango or floods. Locally, we've always used this money to help create safe, decent, affordable housing, provide a suitable living environment, and expand economic opportunities. We've capitalized various loan programs. Trying to summarize the consolidated plan, we really simplified it this year. And I should note that the consolidated plan is put together with the work and assistance of the Community Advisory Board, which is a seven-member committee. There's Pauline Gudis is the chair of that, she has been a longtime member. David Nielsen Jr. is the co-chair. Scott McClellan is on that committee. Councillor Khalid is on that committee. We're glad to have her this year. Sue Sharon has been on the committee for quite a few years. She's the just-retired General Assistance Director. Abdi Kier, McGay, and Ash and the Medina are the members. So they participated, helping to pull together the consolidated plan. We engaged stakeholders, we engaged citizens that are involved, the homeless shelters, state agencies. So a lot went into the development of this. It all got boiled down to four basic goals. Provide essential public services to improve the quality of life. Provide essential public services to improve the quality of life for individuals and families with low to moderate incomes, including special needs populations and those experiencing homelessness or at risk of becoming homeless. There are subcategories under that, but for brevity tonight, it was in the, what was included in the March 26 council agenda. It was in tonight's agenda, so I'll just move on without going to the subcategories. Goal number two is increase and maintain the, and improve the supply of safe and affordable housing for individuals and families with extremely low to moderate incomes. Goal three is create economic opportunities for individuals and families with low to moderate incomes. And goal number four is to preserve and improve public facilities and infrastructure served low to moderate income neighborhoods for special needs residents. That's how we flow dollars to the various parks, the downtown parks especially, improving the infrastructure in the downtown. This did have a public comment period, and we did get several comments that were all really addressed to our impediments to fair housing, but two of those really are more appropriate in this category. The public comment, one that came in was support new and fill housing on vacant lots. It should be amended to include outdoor space and green space. And under goal 2, which said increase, maintain, and improve the supply of affordable housing for individuals and families with moderate low incomes, that's where that will be added in. And on a second note was add in help for small investors. And we would amend one of the subcategories under that as well. So the public comments were received, heard, they made sense to include in the plan, so we will. Putting that sort of covering the ground on the consolidated plan. Again, I had, in the budget that was given to you on March 26, we had really laid out how the dollars were going to be allocated out of that initial $915,000. This year, we had public service agencies, and for the first time in my recollection, we're actually able to fund all the agencies that ask for money. And we're also able to fund them at a very high level. You know, the promises early education, ask for $10,000, they'll be getting to $10,000. Trinity Juvenile Center and Day Shelter, as well as the Food Pantry, also are getting fully funded. Day Shelter asked for $29,000, they will get it. The Food Pantry asked for $9,000. Community Credit Union created a new program. They'll be getting $14,933, that's 98% of their ask. Adult Ed will be getting $18,973. Again, that's 98% of their ask. The reason these folks are not, the committee scores all of these applications, and that's how we allocate it. In the past, it's been a much more difficult number to hit. We'll take the score, multiply what their ask was by their score, and then would have some percentage of that score. Typically, we might have, in years past, you might have the top-scoring agencies would maybe score 98, but then they would only get 68, 60% of their ask. So this is really quite unique. Other agencies that got funded, these were the ones that scored 27. They're getting 96% of their ask. That would be Literacy Volunteers and the YWCA for a school-age children's program. A Community Credit Union is going to be also getting a good chunk of change, it's 96%. Can't read my own handwriting here, $14,396. New Beginnings Homeless Shelter will get $14,400. Seniors Plus is getting $24,000. Veterans Inc., providing services to vets, will get $9,800. Tedford Housing is getting $65,800, excuse me, $65,6580. And then Tree Street Youth, which asked for $20,000, they're going to be getting $18,400, which is 92% of their ask. Under the rest of this program, the CDBG program is funded with this. So we had $173,083 going towards salaries and office supplies and travel, those type things. Fair Housing Market Study is also needed, that was $10,000 allocated for a total of $883,83. Housing, we're going to continue to photo code enforcement officer in its entirety, one position who's really focused on the downtown. That's $79,701. The Choice Housing, we're going to be providing some gap funding to help make sure things happen in the Choice Neighborhood to help them meet their needs. And we're also funding a rehab administration, which helps cover salaries. I had talked about public parks, and there'll be $60,375 going to help fund a path along Lionel Popkin Park. There is $40,000, which is going to be combined with $60,000 from last year's allocation to meet our, to meet a match requirement we have for the Bates 5 Brownfield Cleanup Grant. So out of the $500,000 we received, it's $100,000 that needs to be a match. And then similarly, in years past, we provided $118,750 as matched towards the $1.3 million Choice Neighborhoods Planning and Action Grant. And we are matching, putting another $818,750, so we will have fully funded that. There is $25,000 going into a water fountain at Kennedy Park, which as the Choice Planning work was underway, that was probably the single largest request that came out during the process. However, that was not eligible for funding under the Choice Neighborhood Grant, so the committee thought it would be best to go ahead and fund it using regular CDBG dollars. That covers the CDBG program, and I can pause for any questions or I can just roll right on into the home budget, which is much shorter. It's your call, councillor Mayor, Care.
So I'll open it up to any questions, and I have a question. So in the 20, so I see in the 2015-2019 Consolidated Plan and the 2020 and 2024 Plan, you know, it's full of goals. But are these measurable goals? I mean, do you, how do we, so, you know, if we spent $915,000 last year, how do we know that we're meeting the goals that have been placed in the plan?
Yeah, to fully articulate, there's three different reports. The five-year consolidated plan sort of lays out, here's the long-term strategy. What we're working on right now is the annual action plan, which is saying, here's how I intend to spend the dollars, and here's how they are linked to the goals in the consolidated plan. We cannot fund things that are not articulated in the consolidated plan, which is why we just had you amend the 2015 to 2019 plan so we could actually roll some dollars more quickly. The last piece, which comes to your issue, is what's known as the caper, which is truly a, here's what we said we were going to do, here were the goals that we set. That was included in the backup documentation that provided on this agenda item. But we have to report out on that on an annual basis and keep a rolling tally.
Okay, so, you know, I'm not sure if you're familiar with this report on eliminating homelessness. This is a 2009 report, that it's a 10-year plan to eliminate homelessness. And I see in our CDBG money, the goal is to reduce homelessness. And that's just one example, but are we actually meeting these goals? Are we reducing homelessness by, and we're talking significant amount of federal money, which is of course taxpayer dollars. Are you confident, Lincoln, that we're, you know, if we're saying we're going to pump this much money into reducing homelessness, and again, I'm just using that as one example. Are you confident that we're actually reducing homelessness? Or are we just meeting, you know, this is what we're going to do to reduce homelessness, but if we're not actually reducing it, then maybe we need to rethink how we're doing it?
It's a very good point, and I will say during my tenure with the city, at least the visibility of homelessness has increased during my 20 years with the city, which I'm sorry to report. I think just over the last few years, I think those are larger societal issues that have driven that in large measure. The CDBG dollars really have been targeted to Trinity to help support them. We've also provided case management to Tedford. Is another agency that has received funding over the years. The home program is used specifically to pay security deposits for people who are either homeless or at risk of being homeless. But to say we have, with those investments, we've chipped away at it? To say we can eliminate it, no. And maybe we need to really make significant investments if that's the direction the council wants to go to.
Which I would say nearly a million dollars is a pretty significant investment. And I realize that's broken up over several different goals. I just think we have to try to be as accountable as possible so that if we're spending, you know, several hundred thousand dollars on a specific problem, then if we're finding that we didn't move the needle in that area, we need to, you know, reevaluate how we do it the next consolidated plan. Go ahead, Ed.
I think we can fairly say that without these programs and some other city programs, including general assistance, that the homeless problem would be significantly higher. I think the problem we're running into today is that much of the homelessness is the very hardcore homelessness where you're dealing with individuals who are facing significant addiction or mental health issues, which make them a very, very difficult population to deal with. And unfortunately, I am not sure that as a society there are very good answers to how to deal with that group. But I think you can look at how the money's been invested over time, and we can point to specific things that have resulted in reducing homelessness. I could pretty much guarantee you that that goes both for the Community Development Block Grant Program and for our General Assistance Program. We don't have a good solution yet, I believe, to the hardcore homeless folks who just are exceptionally hard to serve.
Yes, and again, I mean, I used homeless as one example. Really, I think it has to be every goal in CDBG. We have to, you know, the council needs to be comfortable that we're actually making progress in our goals. So, and I know a ton of work goes into it, and I know our community partners put a lot of work into it. But either way, we have to really find, or at least see the visible evidence that we're moving the needle in the right direction. Okay, any other? So I haven't opened a public comment yet, right, Kathy?
Right.
Okay, so we'll open the public comment, and then during that time, I'll move it to the council for questions or comments, and councillor Khalid.
Are we going to the public comment or me first?
No, the public comment is open, and if we see any, we'll let them in. So we'll also do our business as well. Go ahead, councillor Khalid.
I saw councillor Pangil first, so.
Go ahead, councillor Khalid.
Okay. Thank you. So yeah, I was, I had the honor of being part of this committee, and I definitely learned a lot. The different agencies and organizations that are doing great, great work are incredible. And yeah, I don't think we are eliminating homelessness, but, and it's going to take us a long time to do that, you know, even as a society, even for other cities across the nation and across Maine. But with this CBGG funds and grants and all of this, we are definitely reducing it. And the different agencies that did come there, they spoke on it, they were different, that supported. And then we even had a member from, who was representing the homeless population on the committee. So yeah, we are definitely doing a lot of work. But I also want to emphasize the other goals that we have going on from across the city, and all the recommendations are definitely needed in the cities for the infrastructure, for the economic development, for the residents of our community. Yeah, I just wanted to say, and also, it was my first time, of course, being on that committee, but it was the first time that all the agencies have gotten some sort of funding for what they have asked for.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Pettingill?
So listening to your question, Mr. Mayor, I wonder if we're at a position, you know, and it's not to diminish any of the work that anybody's doing towards, you know, reducing and eliminating homelessness in the city. You know, there are some other societal issues that do tie into it. But I wonder if continuing to fund the programs the way that we are, if we're not spending our money wisely. I'm not advocating for reducing any of that money, but it's, maybe we need to do it in a different way. You know, meet these people where they need to be met instead of how we think they need to be met. I don't have the answer on how to do that. Hopefully, hopefully somebody does, but it's worth putting out there.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? City Administrator Barrett?
Yeah, I just wanted to, as councillor Jalinas had asked a question through the chat function.
Yeah, so let me interrupt you for a second. So in general, councillors should not be using the chat because I don't think that's visible for others. In this case, it's a little bit different because it was a solid question, but we should not be making comments on chat or anything in the future, so. Go ahead, Ed.
Yeah, so I just wanted to answer, and I was going to try to answer it in chat, but it wouldn't take my answer because it was too long. Councillor has asked whether she has a conflict of interest and should refrain from voting on this interest because she does have a business that at some point in the future might become eligible for CDBG funding. HUD has some very specific rules around conflict of interest, and anyone who serves on the council or any business they're associated with, they own, if anything you have financial interest in, they are disqualified from CDBG funding for at least a year after they leave the city council. That's intended to clearly make a break between the council's influence on spending decisions and their potential eligibility. So what councillor Jalinas should do is just indicate that issue. But certainly, she is eligible for voting on this proposal given that the conflict of interest restrictions already apply to her as a council member and for a period of time after she leaves the council.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Jalinas, are you all set with that answer? Okay, thank you. Councillor Ray?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to chime in and just, so Link has provided the most paper I think I've ever seen for an agenda item or for agenda items, and so much detailed information. And so I really want to thank Link and your staff, and also the members of the Citizens Committee, so much work. So I just want to acknowledge that to start and be very grateful that I'm using the digital format, so I didn't kill a lot of trees. And then just as we are talking about homelessness and the challenges that we face here in Lewiston, I think it's, we're working towards, you know, changing the course there. And when we're talking about image and we're talking about perceptions of public safety, I think this all rolls up into that. But as councillor Jensen said that fully pointed out earlier, we are a service center and we are getting lots of things right. And so that population ends up coming here. And so we just, I think, as we begin to tackle threads of those conversations in workshop, we're going to think about this differently. I did also want to just say how exciting it is that everyone was able to get funding through this process this year. I don't know that that's happened in years past. I didn't go back and look, but from my memory, recent memory, I don't remember that happening. And so the committee seems to have done really great work to really spread out that funding that we get from the federal government. So I just wanted to appreciate that as well.
Okay, thank you.
And Mayor, if I could just weigh in quickly before we go to the full-on public comment period, let me cover the home budget, and then I think- Cover the home budget and then I think opening it up. The other issue is looking at the I did not get into the details on the consolidated plan goals. But under goal number four, which is if there is a subcategory that provides safe, provides safe, warm and welcoming spaces in all seasons for those experiencing homelessness. So that's just one item where it's mentioned. There's other places in the other agenda items about expanding the supply of housing. So it it's certainly homeless activities certainly can be funded under this, and it's really determining from on a year to year basis, how are those dollars best spent? And in the past, there's been times like, should we just give each agency a little bit of money? Or should we give just one or two agencies a lot of money? And that's something we can talk about in the future. And so to come back to the the home action plan and budget. The allocation that Lewiston will receive this year is $234,138. We're going to spend 17,400 of that for program administration. On the homelessness issue, 15,000 of that is dedicated for security deposits for the homeless or near homeless. We have $330,000 going to help with the Blake and Pine project, which is being built at the corner of Blake and Pine, 35 units by Avesta. And then Raisop is looking to build a nine unit construction project, and we're looking to allocate 265,758 dollars out of that. That's more than the, obviously, the the 234,000. That includes carryover money from prior years. With that, I'll be quiet and let the public comment go.
All right, thank you. So the the public hearing has been open. Have there been any comments?
Mayor, we do have one attendee with their hand raised. So if you want, I can allow them to speak at this point.
Yep, please do.
Okay, Maura Murphy, you are you are able to speak at this point?
She'll just have to unmute herself?
I believe so. I'm a she's allowed to speak at this point.
Okay, Ms. Murphy, if you can hear me, if you can just unmute yourself. Hi, thank you, Ms. Murphy.
Hi. I was wondering, are any of you planning to speak with your ward constituents about how this grant money should be spent? Or are you planning to decide all of it behind closed doors and vote before the citizens of Lewiston know how anything is being spent?
So actually, I think we've had and Lincoln, you can correct me if I'm wrong, we've had several public hearings on this. This and tonight is another one, so we have opened up to our constituents.
I wanted to know how the counselors reach out to the constituents of their wards.
Yeah, so that's a different subject matter, but in general, I think all of us talk to our constituents on a pretty regular basis. Either through social media, through emails. Those are just a couple of examples that I can give. We're not going to go through each individual counselor to find out how they communicate with their their constituents, but.
Well, I think there's a sense among many people in Lewiston who pay very close attention to what's going on that the citizens are not included in the decision making process. You have the city administration, nonprofits and the city council. And the city counselors took an oath to represent the people in their wards. And I think it would be a great idea, especially now that the city is in pretty big financial trouble, that counselors actively solicit input from the people in their wards.
Yeah, I think, Ms. Murphy, we do that on a regular basis. Lewiston has a city council form of government. That means our constituents elect us every year to conduct, every two years to conduct the city's business. I know I speak with my constituents every day, almost every day. If the day goes by that I don't have a conversation with one of my constituents, I'd be surprised. And I know I can speak for for most of the council, if not all of the council, that they speak with their constituents on a regular basis, either through emails, direct conversations, through social media. But in the end, our charter, we have a city council form of government here. And people elect us to do the city business. And every two years, they have the option of not electing us if they don't feel that we've served them properly. So I appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. Dennis, if you can put back the panelists the way that it should be. And are there any other public comments, Madam Clark or Deputy City Administrator, that you can say?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from the council? Okay, if not, I'm going to close the public hearing and call the roll.
Counselor from Ward Two?
Yes.
Ward Three?
Yes.
Ward Four?
Yes.
Ward Five?
Yes.
Ward Six? Counselor from Ward Six?
Counselor Clement?
Will list him as pass. Ward Seven?
Yes.
And Ward One?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Motion passed by vote of six to zero.
Okay, and if we can have someone reach out, he might have lost his his internet or something.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Would that vote be five to two? I believe Counselor Jelineas voted to pass.
Oh, I apologize.
Well, I.
All right, go ahead, Counselor Jelineas.
Actually, I think because the the information was disclosed, Counselor Ray, I think I was allowed to vote. I think it was just important for the public to understand
Okay.
about that. And Counselor Clement, his his screens froze a while back. It looked like he was like just frozen for a long time, so I suspect his internet went out.
Okay, and I think City Administrator Deputy City Administrator Dennis Deodote is attempting to reach out to him. In in the meantime, I see him on a he's now with us. So Ed, if I could, before I go to the next agenda item, I see that most of our staff now are not using video. And I just, you know, I think these are public meetings, so if if staff's not prepared to use video today, I understand that. I really think in the future they need to be on video at public meetings whenever possible.
Okay, I think some of them may simply have had their cameras off, so I would just ask if they do come on to do that. Some of them may be at work. Not all our work computers have cameras, so I'll I will just pass on to everyone who's out there. If you're talking, let us see you.
Yeah, whenever possible, and I understand there'll be times that we can't, but in general, I think that should be the rule. Thank you, Link. That was a good presentation.
Mr. Mayor, did you want to go back for Counselor Clement if he wanted to cast a vote on item number five?
Yeah, so Counselor Clement, were you able to hear most of the discussion on agenda item number five?
Yes, heard everything. For some reason, although the video quit and I don't know what happened there briefly, but I would cast a yes vote for that.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Counselor.
Thank you, Madam Clark. So agenda item number six.
Item number six, Resolve Accepting and Appropriating Community Development Block Grant CARES Act Funding. Requested action to, one, hold a public hearing on this item, and then, two, to approve the resolve accepting and appropriating Community Development Block Grant CARES Act funding.
Okay, thank you. And Link, take it away. You're the star tonight.
And it's getting easier. So now I'm I'm okay being on camera. I don't want to have all the rest of that televised. Too much paper shuffling going on. This is specifically for the $513,518 of additional CDBG dollars that we received. That has been broken up where we're recommending that 50,000 of that be used for program administration, 247,830 dollars for a program that's being called the Emergency Income Payment Program. This really came from the various conversations. I I know all the counselors and mayor, as well as my staff, have been having, reaching out. And it was recognized that there was a potential that people just wouldn't be able to eat either their rent or their mortgage obligations. We worked with HUD, trying to figure out a way to to get through their regulatory process. A lot of what you've already done is what we needed to do to get there. The way this program is set up is there is a thousand dollars up, I should say, there's up to a thousand dollars per month per income qualified individual for up to three months. So if you're having a hard time either meeting your mortgage, and it's because you you lost income because of COVID, or similarly, if you're having a hard time meeting your rent because of COVID. And we will document that you need to be below 80% of the area at or below 80% of the area meeting the income. But it's really to help people stay in their homes and 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 not lose them. So up to a thousand a month for three months. If you don't need a thousand, if all you need is 200, that's great because we can help somebody else. Don't feel that we have to go all the way to the thousand. And then the secondary part of that program would be $500 up in total over the three months. So if for utilities. So if bottom lines are just trying to help people stay in their homes, we're taking almost half of that money and allocating it specifically to that purpose. Again, need to be income qualified and need to have your income, having been dramatically dropped because of COVID. There's another $105,688 that we're recommending to be used for social service agencies. We have not gone through the process. The Counselor Khalid participated in for that, nor do we intend to engage the citizen participate, the citizen group in helping do that. It's going to be pretty tight. It'll be run by staff. And since the council had authorized the city administrator to take action, he'd ceded authority. It would be really staff. It's not that we're not going to talk to the council about it, but just trying to expeditiously move this down the line. We'll we're at this point still, staff is still working to figure out how to get the request out to the agencies. And and again, they need to be dealing with the issues brought about by COVID. We had provided some additional funding to Trinity Jubilee, who's working with the homeless population and helping keep them safe. I think they're a likely candidate. We'll see who else applies. We have $55,000 that's going to be used for a general assistance position. We had funded that under CDBG. This was the first year we had said, okay, we've done that for five years. We're done with that. With when pandemic hit, the volume in that office increased dramatically again. And so it makes sense to do it for one more year, using some of this money to fund that. We are taking $30,000 for micro enterprise grants and 50,000 for economic development grants, which, again, those are programs that were developed, talking with businesses, hearing what they needed. Heidi McCarthy on my staff really helped. She was really what the architect of helping grab those programs along with Misty Parker. And Heidi can also speak to there's additional funds coming from other CDBG dollars and how they all marry together. So if Dennis, could you give Heidi access? Heidi's now got access. I'm not sure if her computer hat. She does. Okay. She's in good shape. So Heidi, could you take it from there?
Sure. So we have in the CDBG 2019 Annual Action Plan, $250,000 that was set aside from our revolving loan fund for economic development loans. And we've taken that loan program and made it essentially function like a grant, giving 0% deferred and forgivable loans. So we have that funding available right now for businesses and will until June 30. After that, we begin the after July 1, we begin the 2020 Annual Action Plan. And in there, we have 125,000 for micro enterprise grants, 100,000 for micro enterprise loans, 175,000 for economic development grants and 352,473 dollars available for economic development loans from our RLF. So the 80,000 that's in the COVID, that does have to specifically be COVID related. The other funding, the 250,000 for the 2019 CDBG budget and the 352 thousand dollars, 452,000 dollars does not have to be specifically COVID related, although we suspect that that a lot of the requests for that funding will be.
Okay, thank you both. Anything else, Link?
No, with that, that's it was really how we're looking to allocate those dollars. That's our recommendation to the council.
Okay. So before, so we'll need a motion, right, Kathy? Because I went right to link. So before we go on to any further discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved?
Moved by Counselor Ray, seconded by Counselor Clement. Any questions or comments from the council? And do we need a public hearing for this as well, Kathy?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you. So we'll also, at the same time, open up the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, you also have a question from Counselor Ray.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Counselor Ray?
Not a question, just a comment. I just wanted to input that I heard from some individuals in the community over the past. Since this was presented to us first as a workshop, and folks are really pleased with the idea of moving from loans to grants. And then also the real focus to keep people in their housing. So I just wanted to make sure that got back to staff as well.
Good, thank you. And are we getting any applicants pre pre-program?
For the for the economic development programs, we have 23 in-house that are split up between Misty, Heidi and myself. So we're actively working with those businesses. Heidi, have we had a one on the for the housing?
The application for the housing isn't up yet because that program wasn't able to be actually put into place until it was approved tonight through this process, like the economic development plans were, because those were already in the consolidated plan where the emergency income payment plan was not.
Thank God I've got strong staff. The.
So I would assume the application process will be up and going tomorrow morning. Is that what the hope is?
Well, it would be, and General Assistance is going to be assisting us. I want to make clear that this is not a general assistance program. This is independent of general assistance, but they are going to help us process all of these applications. I do know that Elaine has had a couple of conversations with people who are aware of this program. And so far, they they have not really been what they they just haven't fit the parameters. And and we've had landlords reach out. And unfortunately, while the payments will go directly to landlords or to the lender, if the people can't meet their mortgage or to the utility companies, landlords themselves are not eligible to apply for the funding. And just because somebody's not paying their rent does not qualify the landlord to take advantage of this. It really needs to be the tenant who asks for it. And they need to be having their incomes adversely impacted by by COVID. If if you have a tenant who is just choosing, you know, they're getting unemployment at this point, or they have some other means of of income that they would be able to pay rent, they're just choosing not to. That's not what this program is for. It's really for those impacted who want to stay. And so it it's a nuance, but I I know there's been conversations, and so far, the two or three I've heard of directly, we just have not been able to make the program work for them.
And so I spoke to a landlord today, and I think you may have spoken with him recently. His tenants are refusing to even apply for assistance, and and a few of them have made it clear that they're not paying. Are there other programs within the consolidated plan that might help him? Because he's trying to address, I think, like a roof issue and some facade issues. Is there other programs within?
Our our regular rehabilitation program for housing, which we have not had a focus on recently, that's sort of been on a hiatus for for a lack of staffing, just not being able to handle it. It's now there's funding there. We're looking to ramp up over the next month or so with staff, so we'll have the capacity to address those issues. And I believe I did speak with that same landlord. That's what I directed him to saying, look, we can't make you fit under the COVID funding, the the business programs. It really doesn't work that way either. But we do have rental rental housing rehab programs that should work.
Okay. So if you could try to reach out to him again, make sure he understood that. I spoke with him today. I'm not sure he understood that. Any other questions or comments from the council? Any public comments? Any public comments?
No, none have come in.
All right, thank you. With that, we'll call the roll.
Counselor from Ward two?
Yes.
Ward three?
Yes.
Ward four?
Yes.
Ward five?
Yes.
Ward six?
Yes.
Ward seven?
Yes.
And word one?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Okay, with that link, one more, agenda item number seven.
Item number seven, resolve approving and adopting the two thousand twenty through two thousand twenty-four analysis of impediments to fair housing plan. Requested action, there are two items. One is to hold a public hearing on this matter. And then number two, to approve the resolve approving and adopting the twenty twenty through two thousand twenty-four analysis of impediments to fair housing plan.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Councilor Khalid, seconded by Councilor Joy. I'll open the public hearing and link, if you could.
I am going to hand this one off to Heidi because she is the author of this and she can do a much better job of explaining it and the nuances of it. She she did a great job with it. So let me turn it over to Heidi.
Thank you. The analysis of impediments to fair housing is part of the consolidated planning process and is required by HUD. Essentially, what we do is we assess our own ordinances and policies as well as local local conditions that affect the location, availability and accessibility of housing. It includes an analysis of barriers and impediments to fair choice or fair housing choice, which can be any actions, omissions or decisions taken which have the effect of restricting a person's housing choice because of race, color, religion, gender, disability, familial status or national origin. It can also be factors that limit a person's ability to choose from housing types that don't necessarily constitute housing discrimination like the impediments do. And those factors can be things like housing supply and location, physical accessibility of housing, zoning for homes, source of income, accessibility of financing and limited English proficiency. So as we were doing the analysis for this, we found some areas that that we could work on for fair housing. And fair housing activities tend to be things like planning processes and evaluations and workshops for tenants and landlords to inform them about fair housing and help to increase the visibility of fair housing choice. So our zoning codes, we thought that we could conduct an evaluation of the current zoning in order to create a code that has a simple set of architectural standards. But that will end up being shortened to just conduct an evaluation of our current zoning so that we can identify some of those things that may be stopping people from having fair housing choice. Modifying zoning for accessory dwelling units, creating regulations to increase safety and housing choice for people in recovery, essentially barrier safe housing choice for renters with a variety of things that can make it hard for them to find housing, unhealthy and unsafe units. And this led goes under here, lack of accessible financing for homeownership for our Muslim community members, lack of accessible units for people with disabilities, lack of larger units for families and few opportunities for owner occupancy within multifamily neighborhoods. We did receive three public comments on the analysis of impediments to fair housing. Two of them you already heard, because although they were to the analysis of impediments or comments made on the analysis of impediments, the activity suggested actually fit under the consolidated plan. I will review those again, but they have been included in the other plan. So one was to support new infill housing on vacant lots should be amended to include outdoor space and green space. That has been added to the consolidated plan. Add and help for small investors, then that has been added to the consolidated plan. One change that is going to be made in the analysis of impediments to fair housing after comment was instead of using the word engaged new mayors and lending institutions to brainstorm solutions, we're going to change that to support because these conversations are already happening. This change will be made to better reflect ongoing efforts in our community. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? All right, and how are we doing on public comments? Anything further?
Nothing yet, no.
And I see there's an addition.
It is. On the telephone is Heather Hunter. She had to clear her other telephone line to allow for public comment to come in for the LCIP item. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, councilors, any other questions or comments? If not, call the roll.
Counselor from Ward two?
Yes.
Ward three?
Yes.
Ward four?
Yes.
Ward five?
Yes.
Ward six?
Yes.
Ward seven?
Yes.
And word one?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. Agenda item number eight, please.
Item number eight, public hearing and adoption of the FY twenty twenty-one Lewiston Capital Improvement Program Bond Issue Order. Requested action to adopt the fiscal year twenty twenty-one Lewiston Capital Improvement Program Bond Issue Order, authorizing the issuance of eleven million forty thousand dollars in FY twenty twenty-one public improvement bonds and making an appropriation for certain capital projects.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Ray, seconded by Councilor Clement. And I'll open the public hearing and also open, so Ed, do you want to do, or who's presenting? Heather? I'll open it for a brief run through by Heather. Heather, are you there?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the council has gone through, the LCIP was initially presented in January. There were several projects presented to the council with the pandemic crisis and looking at recommendations from both the planning board and the finance committee. Clearly, all elected bodies and appointed bodies wanted to stick with the city's eighty percent debt limitation, which for the public takes the average of the past three years payment and payoff and then multiplies that times eighty percent. And that limitation is applied to both city and school projects. So initially, the amount started at the beginning of the LCIP process was ten million, a little over ten million ninety thousand dollars with a debt limit of seven million two hundred and seventy-five thousand nine hundred and thirteen dollars, well over the eighty percent rule with the combination of deferments, funding some of the requested projects through other sources, including transfers from surplus bond issues as well as other means. You will see the portion of the city school LCIP has been reduced to well under the eighty percent rule. And the total, as Madam Clerk indicated, the total request for the LCIP is eleven million forty thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you. And just to clarify, the Martel parking lot rehab, that's still within there in the LCIP, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
It's actually, it's the McMahon parking lot.
McMahon, okay, thank you. All right, any questions or comments from the council? Any public comments noted? You you have a question from Councilor Ray. Okay, any public comments?
None right now.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Ray?
Are you to be a thorn in everyone's side today? I just wanted to note the McMahon parking lot was not originally recommended by school administration. However, the school committee felt it very important to keep in. And so I just wanted to forward a long appreciation that that is still being included from the school committee. We batted it around quite a lot. And so the ability to keep that in, since we had further reductions on the city side, was incredibly important. So just a thank you to everyone for being accommodating of that.
Okay, thank you. With no public comments pending, throw it up to the council one more time. Any other questions or comments? If not, call the roll.
Counselor from Ward two?
Yes.
Ward three?
Yes.
Ward four?
Yes.
Ward five?
Yes.
Ward six?
Yes.
Ward seven?
Yes.
And word one?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. Agenda item number nine, please.
Item number nine, final budget public hearing for the fiscal year twenty twenty-one municipal budget. Requested action to conduct a final budget public hearing to receive citizen input and communication regarding the proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-one municipal budget. This does not need a motion and a vote. You can simply just open the floor for public comment.
Okay. We are, we do, the public hearing is now open. And should we keep it open and move on to the next agenda item just to give? Or should we just wait a few minutes or?
I think either way, whatever your preference is. We do have the telephone line for the finance director open as well as the ability for people to raise their hand if they're participating in the Zoom meeting and also to email in comments at the public comment website.
Mr. Mayor, if you would like, we could run through a very quick summary of the overall budget. A chance to, some time if they wanted to comment.
All right, yep, thank you very much.
Okay, this this start, I'll be glad to start and Heather can clarify anything. We certainly started this this budget process in a different environment. And we very quickly had to regroup and reconsider everything we were asking for because of what happened in the economy. So basically, the initial budget requests from the city and school were, as I recall, somewhere in the range of over a dollar fifty tax increase. And as that that was, as the budget process progressed, it was a natural reduction, as there always is of those amounts. Certainly, the school department kicked that off by reducing their initial proposal by over a million dollars. That brought down their budget request. We also did some minor adjustments. Then the situation hit with the virus and the recognition came that we were looking at some potential dramatic hits on the revenue side of the budget. Heather and I sat down and we re-projected all of our revenues to try to get a better handle on what we might be looking at. We basically concluded that we were probably looking at about a three and a half million dollar loss in revenue. So not only do we have to make up the issue with an original increase in request, we had to make up that additional three and a half million. What we basically did was a number of reductions, about half of that amount was reduced from the budget. A big part of that are the vacant positions that we talked about earlier today. The other half, we are making up through a one-time appropriation from the city's fund balance, our rainy day fund, to cover us through because we, there is so much uncertainty about exactly how deep this economic downturn is going to be and how long it's going to last. The net result of all of those reductions is that the overall tax rate will go down by twenty-four cents so that we can at least assure our citizens that they will not see a tax increase from the city in this environment. And in fact, we'll see a slight reduction in their taxes. Depending on what the state does, it might actually be a little bit bigger than that twenty-four cents because the state has also included in their budget a, an increase in the homestead exemption, which would provide some additional relief. I will note that it's unclear whether the state's going to make any changes in that. But at least right at the moment, many of our homeowners and folks who qualify for the homestead exemption are potentially going to see even a little bit more of a decrease. So basically, I think we achieved the council's goal. The council was very clear that in this environment, taxes were not going to be increased. And I think we've managed to do that and managed to do that in a way that does not do great harm to the organization and preserves flexibility going forward if our analyses are either too optimistic or too pessimistic.
Okay, thank you. Would you like to add anything to that, Heather?
No, I think the city administrator summarized it fairly well. I will say, from the initial budget that was presented to you when the budget workshop or the council workshop initially started to the proposed tax rate based upon the orders before you tonight, the council between the city and school reduced the tax rate by a dollar ninety-nine.
Okay, thank you. So I just, I, you know, one, I want to share my appreciation to the council. It was a challenging budget year. I was speaking to the city clerk not too long before our meeting. Our entire budget process was handled electronically, which is very challenging. But I am, you know, I'm very appreciative of the work you did and the work you did for our residents and our taxpayers. You know, even kind of referring back to some public comment before I heard from so many constituents. And I reached out to several, and I know all of you as well had a lot of conversations with your constituents in reference to this budget. And none of this came to us, you know, none of this was taken lightly when we're talking about positions and you know, anything that directly affects staff. But thank you, and I want to thank our department heads and the staff because I know budget time sometimes can be nerve wracking, especially during difficult times. So any other comments from city councilors? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Ward three has her hand up.
Okay, Councilor Ray. So your your hand, when it raises, is up in that blue corner, so it's challenging for me to see.
And I'm the most frequent offender. I'm sorry about that.
The city clerk watching and Dennis.
Thank you for saving me, Kathy. So I just wanted to, again, shout out to the school committee who helped us get to where we needed to go without more pain and agony on the city side. The vote last night was eight to one in favor of moving this budget forward. And so a majority of support. But I will say that the the school committee member who decided to vote against and some other members shared that it was really tough for them. So I think as we work past digital meetings and acknowledging that this process was particularly difficult to undertake in the digital context, I think continuing to work on our relationship with the school committee and individual members and understanding their concerns is really going to be critical. And so I'd encourage folks to reach out to their counterparts and also to the chair just to continue to improve on that relationship.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Petten Gill?
So Counselor Ray kind of stole my thunder. But I just wanted to say how incredible of a process this was. You know, hats off and many thanks to everybody that was involved, from city to staff, to the school department and the school staff as well. You know, and we all should, you know, give ourselves, you know, a good job. Not only did we come into this dealing with the the COVID crisis, but we were also able to successfully bring in our partners on the school committee and really work together to be able to do this as as a team and as as one one city. So that's that's much appreciated.
Thank you, Counselor Petten Gill. Anything else? Counselor Jensen?
Mr. Mayor, I do want to acknowledge with our new superintendent, Superintendent Finn, he did come in with a lot of great ideas and a lot of changes he wanted to make to the school district. And a lot of those did come with extra costs. So with the cuts the school department had to make, he is, you know, pulling back on some of his plans too. So I do want to acknowledge that. I thank him for for the understanding and hopefully in the years to come, he's going to be able to push forward with those. You know, working on the last three school committee budgets, I feel comfortable. I feel comfortable where this, the school district is right now. It's, I mean, everywhere, public funding is not where it should be. Public education funding is not what it should be, but I feel comfortable going forward that Lewiston School will be able to get through the next year we're at, and early education is an important part of this city, and that we've given a lot of concern to that. So I don't think that schools are funded exactly where I would like them to be as an educator myself. I am comfortable where we are as a city at this point in regards to our school budget.
All right, thank you, Counselor Jensen. Counselor Clement?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just briefly, it's been an interesting process. Being new to the process this year and never going through the traditional budget process, I thought we did well with the electronic format. Kind of prevented us from getting at each other's throats, I think, like, might have happened otherwise, but I say that in jest. I would like to commend the school department. Early on, as a member of your finance committee, I met with the school department and the finance committee chair. We shared some concerns about the LCIP and a number of things. And going into that meeting, I had my doubts, but I have really got to step up and say they've done a wonderful job in cooperation with us this year. I agree with the administrator that our budget may not be the best thing in the world. I look around at what's happening in other cities. My former city, where I worked for so many years, is furloughing thirty employees at the end of this budget session. They obviously have a different take on things than we do. Either that, or I don't know what has led up to that, but we have managed to forestall that sort of thing. I hope that we can continue to forestall it. I hope that better times are ahead of us, and when they are, we can get back to work to putting this city in the place that it should be, as the second largest city in the state of Maine. But to all involved, my personal thanks for their cooperation in this process, particularly the, the members of the school staff and the school committee who have cooperated above and beyond with this process. We wouldn't be where we are right now without their help, and I truly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I see no other questions or comments coming from Counselor. I'll close the public hearing at this point, and we'll move on to agenda item number ten.
Item number ten, Receiving the Finance Committee Recommendation Regarding the Proposed Fiscal Year 2021 Municipal Budget. Requested action to receive and review the recommendation from the Finance Committee regarding the proposed fiscal year 2021 municipal budget.
Okay, thank you. Heather, briefly, if you could?
Yes, the Finance Committee, after sitting down and deliberating on at least two, if not three, meetings, forwarded their recommendation to both the city council and on behalf of the Finance Committee Chairperson, extended thanks not only to the staff, but also to the school department for not, for holding the tax rate increase not only flat, but also to have a reduction in that, and holding the water and sewer increases for the upcoming year flat, and adhering to the eighty percent debt limit. Clearly, they appreciate the effort, especially understanding the challenges of the COVID-19 changes this budget on a moment's notice, and they extended the offer to help wherever they can in future as the financial situation may change, both to the positive or to the detriment.
Okay, thank you. Do we need a motion, or is it just, it, yes?
It is, to receive it, yes, thank you.
I want to entertain a motion. Moved by Counselor Clement. Seconded by Counselor Jelineus. Any other questions or comments? If not, call the roll.
Counselor from Word Two.
Yes.
Word Three.
Yes.
Word Four.
Yes.
Word Five.
Yes.
Word Six.
Yes.
Word Seven.
Yes.
And Word One.
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you. Agenda item eleven, please.
Item number eleven, Resolve Authorizing the Use of $1,593.68 From the General Fund Unassigned Fund Balance for Capital Outlay Purchases and Other One-Time Expenses and $1,650,000 to Carry Forward and Balance the Fiscal Year 2021 General Fund Operating Budget. Requested action to approve the resolve authorizing the use of $1,593,068 from the General Fund Undesignated Fund Balance for Capital Outlay Purchases and Other One-Time Expenses and $1,650,000 to Carry Forward and Balance the Fiscal Year 2021 General Fund Operating Budget.
Moved by Counselor Jensen, and I'm not sure who else.
LaJoy.
All right, seconded by Counselor LaJoy. Ed?
Sure, I, on a, pretty much on an annual basis, the city has used its fund balance toward capital projects, and that's based on a fund balance policy, which says basically we should have at least eight percent of general fund revenues plus transfers in, in reserve, and no more than twelve percent. We ended up in, entering into this budget process a little over the twelve percent level. And initially, we're going to use considerably, considerably more for capital purchases. When the budget or the, the financial situation hit with COVID, the decision was made that we really needed to go back and try to reduce as much as possible the use of undesignated fund balance for capital projects, and to redirect that money as one-time support for the city's budget as in effect an emergency rainy day fund operation. I will point out that that requires and is included in here, a waiver of the city council's policy on how fund balance is used to allow for us to use it to help balance the budget. But I think everybody recognizes that this is an opportunity, or this is the kind of situation that our savings or our rainy day fund is designed to address. And I think you could probably argue that this goes a little bit beyond rain into a heavy thunderstorm, hopefully not a hurricane. So I think it makes sense for us to do this. Our one caution, as always, is a recognition that that $1.6 million is not an, unexhausted, is not coming from an inexhaustible fund. We expect here, this, end of this fiscal year, we're already taking a hit with some impacts on our revenues that could affect our fund balance as well. So we always need to keep that in mind going forward. But I think we've made a reasonable balance here between trying to address capital needs that really need to be addressed, putting off others that could be put off, and reserving as much of our fund balance as possible while supporting next year's operating budget.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments from the council? If not, call the roll.
Counselor from Word Two.
Yes.
Word Three.
Yes.
Word Four.
Yes.
Word Five.
Yes.
Word Six.
Yes.
Word Seven.
Yes.
Word One.
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. Agenda item number twelve, please.
Item number twelve, Resolve Approving the Final Budget Adjustments to the Fiscal Year 2021 Municipal Budget. Requested action to approve the resolve approving the final budget adjustments to the fiscal year 2021 municipal budget.
Thank you. I want to entertain a motion.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Counselor Ray, seconded by Counselor Petten Gill. We kind of had our presentation earlier, so unless councils have any questions or comments.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Ray.
So it looks like we had an attendee who wanted to ask a question a couple minutes ago. I'm going to try to pronounce her name, Cheryl Lynn Moran, and then there's also a question in the chat from Erica Crowley. And it just looked like we were moving past those, so.
Okay, so Erica asked, our emailed comments not talked about during the meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I think those may refer to the comments that we discussed earlier that had to do with the Recreation Division.
Right, so we acknowledge those comments.
During the six o'clock, it was during the six o'clock workshop session where we reviewed the different vacant positions, and we had six comments, Dennis?
Yeah, actually, we, we summarized those during the actual public comment period at the start of the official meeting. I mean, there was six comments that we did forward along. Also, to be clear, all of those comments and emails were forwarded along to all of the counselors and the mayor to, to be seen.
Okay, and so Ms. Crowley is saying, "Thank you." And we did, so just, let's, let's just quickly, all those comments were related to the Recreation Department position that was slated to be, I hate to say cut, because it's really still there, but not funded. There was no other, it was all related to that, correct?
Correct.
And I think every counselor kind of acknowledged that, you know, it wasn't an easy decision, and I think every counselor kind of acknowledged that we're committed to the rec program, and we look forward to having further discussion once we get through this budget year, and even maybe possibly during this budget year, seeing if we can find funds to, to assist the rec program. Is that a fair statement? Okay.
Yes.
And then Counselor, and so Ms. Crowley, if you're still listening, which I think you are because you responded, "Thank you," but thank you very much for just reminding us to maybe talk about that again. Dennis?
Yeah, just, just to follow up on Counselor Ray's comment, I did see the hand raised by Cheryl Moran, but she's lowered it. So if she's hearing us now, I'm not sure if she still has a comment, but it's no longer raised at this point.
Okay, so let me just remind all of the attendees that kind of public comment is open throughout the meeting. So even if we've gone past an agenda item, it would be important for us to hear any comments if you still have one. And maybe she had a question that was answered, but you'll keep a close eye. Go ahead.
You actually have now a, another attendee, Peter Soprano, that has asked to speak.
Okay, yep, so bring, what's his last name again?
Soprano.
Soprano, yep. Hi, Mr. Soprano.
Hi, I hope you guys can hear me. I'm sorry I joined late. Okay, great.
Are we pronouncing your name correctly?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, and you're a Lewiston resident?
I am, yes.
Thank you, sir. Go ahead.
So I just have a question in terms of this rec position that's in question right now. How will that impact the amount of programming that can go through the department? Has that been looked at in terms of if they're going to reduce offerings because of the reduction of this staff? I know it's been vacant for some time. I'm just curious how this is going to impact us for the next year if it cannot be filled.
Yeah, so I'll quickly, you know, Ned may need to add to it, but right now, all of, most all of our program has been suspended because of the state of emergency, and we don't anticipate that changing much over the summer. So i-if that did change, and everything was, we were able to open everything up immediately, which I don't think would happen, it would be seriously impacted. We do have other areas in the budget that if this suddenly opened, and we had a lot of requests for programings, we do believe, you know, either through temporary wages, or if we didn't see the dramatic revenue reductions that we're expecting to see from the state, then we'd be able to add something mid-course. But I think we're going to be paying closer attention to it over the, over the, you know, the next several months. But the quick answer is, yes, at this point, it does dramatically affect program, unless something changes for this year.
Okay, just to add a comment, you know, because I know I have a daughter who's ten, and, I mean, she's been home for two months now. I would hate to think that something will happen that'll impact what's available to her when she's been nothing but cooped up in a house for months on end right now. It, it seems like recreation is going to be a method and, and to kind of restore some normalcy as soon as people can get their hands on it. So I really hope we're really going to look close at that because as small as our rec department is staff-wise, they, they have been doing a lot, and we need them now more than ever because everywhere is closed. So I just really hope that, should there be an appropriate time to look at that, we really do take a serious look. I, I don't want to see this extended for the sake of money because there are a lot of people who depend on the services and the activities that go on through that place, so.
Yeah, thank you very much. Is there any other counsel that would like to respond to that? You know, I'll just add, I think every counselor here thinks we need to get our recreation program back, back up on its feet, and we're actually, you know, I, we're hoping to do that as quickly as possible. With nothing else from the council, thank you, Peter. Appreciate it. Anyone else, Dennis?
Yes, you do have one more member of the public, Cheryl Moran. I'm going to allow her to speak now.
Thank you.
I'm trying to bring her in, but it's telling me she has an older version of Zoom, so I.
There she is. Okay.
Good evening. Are you able to hear me?
We do, thank you. Hi, Ms. Moran.
All right, thank you, thank you. I'm wondering if I can shed a little bit of light on the way that recreation works. I'm not sure that the city counselors and the upper management in the city understands that we planned for summer camp and summer activities in February. We are now planning fall and winter activities. We generally are planning six months ahead of time. Very similar to the way the city budget is planned sort of a year ahead. We're planning six months to nine months ahead of time. So to leave recreation with that position vacant requires myself, as a senior principal clerk, and Jason Henkin, who is the recreation superintendent, to take on the duties of the programmer, and thereby, our own duties would be lacking. So I just wanted that consideration, that piece to be considered in your vote. I'm not sure that people really do know how much we do at recreation. We're kind of isolated. We're, we're off on Central Ave by ourselves. We're not connected to City Hall or to Public Works directly. And I just wanted that information there prior to any decision-making, and I do appreciate your time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Moran.
Thank you.
All right. Any other quest, anything else pending? Dennis?
Not on the Zoom. I just want to double-check, and we, we do not have any other comments. No.
Okay, and if we can go back to our panelists? Dennis?
Yes.
Okay. All right, and no other public comments, you said?
Correct, no other, no other comments at this time.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the council? If not, call the roll.
Counselor from Word Two.
Yes.
Word Three.
Yes.
Word Four. Word Four, I think you need to unmute.
Yes.
Thank you, Mike. Word Five.
Yes.
Word Six.
Yes.
And Word Seven.
Yes.
And Word One.
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. Agenda item number thirteen.
Item number thirteen, Resolve Making an Appropriation for Municipal Budget Year 2021. Requested action to approve the resolve making an appropriation for municipal budget year 2021.
Thank you. I want to entertain a motion.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Counselor Jensen, seconded by Counselor Clement. Briefly, Ed?
Very briefly, this is the master resolve that makes the actual appropriation of the general fund's budget and addresses all of the various legal things that have to be addressed under state law, such as how we handle payments and interest rates for late payments and things like that.
All right, thank you. Any questions or comments from the council? Call the roll.
Counselor from Word Two.
Yes.
Word Three.
Yes.
Word Four.
Yes.
Word Five.
Yes.
Word Six.
Yes.
Word Seven.
Yes.
Yes.
Word One?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. Agenda item number fourteen.
Item number fourteen, Resolve Making an Appropriation for Utility and Special Revenue Funds for Municipal Budget Year 2021. Requested action to approve the resolve making an appropriation for utility and special revenue funds for the municipal budget year 2021.
I want to obtain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Khalid, seconded by Counselor Clement. Questions? Oh, who's that? Ed or? Yeah, Ed?
Yep, this is just the same thing for our utility funds, making appropriation for water, sewer, and stormwater. And as was mentioned earlier, just to reiterate, where we initially had anticipated needing a water rate increase and a sewer rate increase, we have managed to make the necessary adjustments to put those off. It's something the council's probably going to have to take a look at in next year's budget because particularly on the water side, things are getting pretty skinny.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments from the council? Call the roll.
Counsel from Word Two?
Yes.
Word Three?
Yes.
Word Four?
Yes.
Word Five?
Yes.
Word Six?
Yes.
Word Seven?
Yes.
And Word One?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. Agenda item fifteen, please.
Item fifteen, Order Authorizing the City Administrator to Provide City Services and Funding for City Nonprofit Organization Activities in accordance with the fiscal year 2021 City Council Approved List. Requested action to approve the order authorizing the city administrator to provide city services and funding for city nonprofit organization activities in accordance with the fiscal year 2021 City Council Approved List. And I will note, Mr. Mayor, that we distributed to the council and the media this morning a revised order for this item, and we also had it uploaded on the city website as well.
Okay, thank you. I want to obtain a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Counsel Joy, seconded. Somebody?
Wait a sec, I tried to.
Okay, thank you. Seconded by Counselor Ray. Briefly, Deputy City Administrator Dote?
So basically, this is we each year, we receive a number of requests in terms of nonprofit or events that are going on in the city in terms of services. So what you have is this resolve is just approving those, the slate of those requests, and it's a waiver of permits, overtime fees, and and such that that all include in that in terms of the special events application.
All right, thank you. Any questions or comments from the council? Counselor Ray?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could you refer us to where the new listing is? I don't see it on the city website.
It should be, it should be right embedded in the agenda item. The original order was removed, and it was replaced with the new order, Alicia. So the very bottom paragraph regarding the festival zone for the flea market is the new language.
Okay, so then I have a different question.
Okay.
So the kind of Excel spreadsheet accompanying this has a date of April 7 on it. And so some of these events are being announced kind of on a rolling basis that they are being canceled. And so these in-kind donations, they just kind of zero out into the world or what happens with them?
So basically, these these anything in terms, for example, of overtime costs, those are budgeted into the budget. So those would just not be spent out of the budget and returned to the general fund at the end of the at the end of the fiscal year if the events don't go forward. So for example, one on there that certainly in the next fiscal year is the Great Falls Balloon Festival. As you noted, when we did this, this was planned for and and anticipated, but in recent week, this was just canceled. So I think we're going to have that scenario probably on several of those events that do fall into the year. It's just going to have to be, as you said, a rolling basis and and kind of adjust as it goes.
If we just, I don't know if this is possible, but I do know we have outlooks, so we have calendars. Could we just give a quarterly update on where this kind of list stands after its approval?
You you mean in terms of events, just in terms of events that actually carried forward? Yeah, sure, we can certainly do that.
Thank you so much.
Hey, thank you. Counselor Clement, did you have anything to add on that?
No, my question was answered. The deputy city administrator brought up the point that I was going to bring up, and we're all set now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the council or comments? If not, call the roll.
Counsel from Word Two?
Yes.
Word Three?
Yes.
Word Four?
Yes.
Word Five?
Yes.
Word Six?
Yes.
Word Seven?
Yes.
And Word One?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. Agenda item number sixteen.
Item sixteen, Resolve Authorizing the Use of $1,500 from the Farrar Fund for Costs of Basic Necessary Services for Needy Individuals. Requested action to approve the resolve authorizing the use of $1,500 from the Farrar Fund for Costs of Basic Necessary Services for Needy Individuals.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Jalinas, seconded by Counselor Jensen. And Heather, briefly?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. This was a request left to the city several years ago. The principal and the amount of $18,551 is maintained in perpetuity. The council elects to spend interest. Unfortunately, with the interest rates that have been experienced recently, the investment earnings for the prior year are not adequate enough to meet the needs. So with the accumulated earnings to date, we have been appropriating for the last three fiscal years, a reduced amount at the $1,500 to date. I did check so far. I think we've used maybe 100 in the current fiscal year. So any amount that's not used is maintained in that accumulated interest earnings to carry forward to future budget.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments for Heather? Okay, if not, call the roll.
Counsel from Word Two?
Yes.
Word Three?
Yes.
Word Four?
Yes.
Word Five?
Yes.
Word Six?
Yes.
Word Seven?
Yes.
And Word One?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. Agenda item number seventeen.
Item number seventeen, Resolve Authorizing the Transfer of $930,000 from the Various Capital Projects to Fund the $40,000 Local Share of the Airport FBO Ramp Construction Project, the $330,000 Fiscal Year 2020-21 Lewiston Technology Plan, and the $200,000 Canal Street Parking Garage Repair Project. Requested action to approve the resolve authorizing transfer of $930,000 from the Various Capital Projects to Fund the $400,000 Local Share of the Airport FBO Ramp Construction Project, the $330,000 Fiscal Year 2021 Lewiston Capital Improvement Plan, and the $200,000 Canal Street Parking Garage Repair Project.
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Jensen?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Khalid. And Heather, do you have anything on that?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. As we have done in prior years, if there were surplus bond proceeds, if a project was completed and and came in under budget, additionally, if investment earnings are earned on outstanding bond proceeds before they are spent, and in recent economic times where premiums were actually received upon bond sale, generated funds available to offset requests for projects that were in the LCIP in order to use up prior bond proceeds and monies available.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments from the council? If not, call the roll.
Counsel from Word Two?
Yes.
Word Three?
Yes.
Word Four?
Yes.
Word Five?
Yes.
Word Six?
Yes.
Word Seven?
Yes.
And Word One?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. Agenda item number eighteen, please.
Item number eighteen, Resolve Authorizing the Transfer of $305,000 from the Various Capital Projects to Fund the $255,000 Dingly Building Security Project and the $50,000 Mobile Hot Spots Project. Requested action to approve the resolve authorizing transfer of $305,000 from Various Capital Projects to Fund the $255,000 Dingly Building Security Project and the $50,000 Mobile Hot Spots Project.
Okay, thank you. I want to obtain a motion.
Moved.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Ray, seconded by Counselor Pettingill. And Heather, you're on again.
Likewise, what we just did with the city side of the bond proceeds, this is the school version of that. The school committee, I believe, voted on this order last night, so they have approved the transfer. Now it becomes before the city council.
All right, thank you. Any questions or comments? Fair and none, call the roll.
Counsel from Word Two?
Mr. Mayor, can I jump in? Sorry.
Sorry.
Yes.
I know my hands hidden in the corner. The authorization that came through the school committee last night does not match this authorization. It was solely for $255,000 for the Dingly Security Project. The $50,000 for mobile hot spots was not part of that order.
Well, this was the amended version that the Bobby Avery gave me.
So can we, can we approve, Heather, can we approve this? And then if if the the school committee either amends or doesn't, then would that change anything?
What you can do is approve it subject to the school committee approving the $50,000 for the hotspot.
Okay, and can I get a friendly amendment to to add that?
So moved.
Okay, all right, so we're good with a friendly amendment, Kathy?
Right, I'll just clarify. So Counsel from Word Three made the original motion. Counsel from Word Two made the second. So if they're both agreeable to including that language as the finance director recommended, which will just add to the motion contingent upon approval from the school committee. Great, thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Alicia, for catching that. Okay, seeing none, call the roll.
Counsel from Word Two?
Yes.
Word Three?
Yes.
Word Four?
Yes.
Word Five?
Yes.
Word Six?
Yes.
Word Seven?
Yes.
And Word One?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you. And Dennis, if we can bring Marcella in, agenda item number nineteen.
Item number nineteen, Order Authorizing the Library Director to Apply for and Accept a National Endowment for the Humanities Grant under their newly created NEH CARES Cultural Organizations Program. Requested action to approve the order authorizing the library director to apply for and accept a national endowment for the humanities grant under their newly created NEH CARES Cultural Organizations Program.
Okay, thank you. I want to obtain a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Ray, seconded by Counselor Khalid. Good evening, Marcella.
Good evening.
Go ahead. If you have a presentation that you'd like to give, give a brief one, please.
Sure. So the National Endowment for the Humanities under the CARES Act received funding for organizations that have been adversely impacted by the coronavirus that work specifically with humanities. So as a department of the city, the library and thus the city are eligible to apply for this. We are looking particularly at focusing our efforts on around public programming. The library has been closed since mid-March, and we anticipate additional limitations on our programming going forward, at least for a few months, on our in-person programming. And so the the thing that's different about this grant from typical grants that the NEH and the federal government offer is that operational costs are allowed to be applied for. And so we are looking at things like personnel. For example, the couple of positions that support public programming in the library more heavily. In talking with staff, we for to try to strengthen our application a bit, this is pretty highly competitive. We are focusing primarily on children's programming. For anyone who has kids, they will know that social distancing is a very difficult idea with children. And so we anticipate that children's programming is likely the last to be restored at the library. And and that's going to hurt some of our community kids. And so what we're trying to do with these funds is identify alternatives to some of the in-person programming that we do. What staff are thinking through is what can be done virtually, what might be done, for example, by mail, or even curbside for children specifically. And this funding would come at no cost to the city. There's no cost matching, no anything like that. What it would do is represent a cost relief. These positions are already in the library budget. And so the burden of of covering those costs would come on this grant instead of the city budget if we were successful.
Wow, that's pretty impressive. We don't typically see grants like that.
Exactly, exactly.
Just real quick, some of the the online programming that I've seen from coming out of the library over the last few weeks has been very impressive. So I just want to share that with you.
I will definitely pass that along to staff. They're working pretty hard.
They are, and they're doing a really good job. It's I've watched several of them and always leave with a smile.
Oh, good.
Any questions or comments from the council? Counselor Jalinas?
Just want to thank you, Ms. Pres, for this presentation and wish you the best with this. This is very, very important.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, seeing none, call the roll.
Counsel from Word Two?
Yes.
Word Three?
Yes.
Word Four?
Yes.
Word Five?
Yes.
Word Six?
Yes.
Word Seven?
Yes.
Word One?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you, Marcella. And Dennis, I see you working at it, bringing back Lincoln. Thank you. Agenda item twenty?
Item number twenty, Order Authorizing the City Administrator to Execute an Option Agreement with Avesta Housing Development Corporation for the Sale and Redevelopment of the Former Martell School. Requested action to approve the order authorizing the city administrator to execute an option agreement with Avesta Housing Development Corporation for the sale and redevelopment of the former Martell School.
So moved.
Moved by Counsel Ray, seconded by Counselor Jensen. And Link?
Yeah, this is a good news story. City got this building back from the school department. It's former Martell School. We had a request for proposals, and council chose Avesta Housing and Lewiston Housing Authority partnered on the project. They're going to pay $129,000 for the land. They're going to build the eleven and a half million dollar project, forty-four units of senior housing. It will be fully taxable. And this is really the option agreement to sort of lay out the pieces. I think the high points are the Avesta will actually be the the owner for the time being. It will be assignable in the future during the tax credit process. They end up with limited partnerships, but Avesta will be the person we're working with. They have agreed to provide green space in the back that they will plow and they not plow, will maintain. There is a playground that's not in great shape there. I know some of it's been cordoned off to keep kids off of it. That's something that the Public Works Department will need to be addressing if the council wants to replace the playground there. That's funding that would need to come from the city. CDVG, which we were working on earlier, is one of the uses or possible funding sources for that. And the city would And the city would also need to maintain the liability on it, on insurance, on the on the playground equipment. But the fact we'll have open green space that we're not maintaining will be a relief to the Public Works Department. They've agreed not to ask for TIF for home financing. But if environmental issues arise, they have maintained the ability to ask If they might be able to get some support from the city through brownfield grants, things of that nature. In a nutshell, that's the project and hope that's something council is supportive of.
Okay, on the senior, the possibility of a senior center going there. One, I'd like to just make sure that the council is behind that Because I didn't get any real strong vibes from this agenda item that. Are they going to provide a space? Is that a definite thing?
They they are willing to provide it. We really don't know what what is needed at this point. Hearing the discussion tonight about the Recreation Department really being shrunk pretty significantly. They were going to be our conduit to to work with the seniors to find out what's needed. They are willing to provide space in the old Martell School building. What they do not have is funding to fit it out for use as a senior center. So if we would like to see it there, they're willing. And we really will go through the process, working with them, see what works, what can be done, and whether we can fund it. Again, community development block grant money is a possibility for funding a senior center that's considered a public facility. So that's that's a possible source if we can make it work.
Okay, do we know the dimension of the space that they're providing, how big of an area it is?
I do not. No, I I don't know.
Okay.
And I know Catherine Elliott, who's with Avesta, was going to be watching tonight. So Dennis, I don't know if she's sort of on your list of folks there, if she can, if she is indeed watching, she might be able to weigh in on that. But I think they were really waiting for the city to say, here's what we need as opposed to here's what we've got. I mean, it's space they would not be able to use for senior housing, sort of be, you know, at grade or below grade, actually. So it's not ideal land. I I'm not that, I've only been in the building once to read to, I think it was second graders. So I don't know the building well personally.
So are you saying it's in the basement of the main building?
It it would be in the old part of the school, yes. I mean, a portion in the middle, the newer portion is going to be demolished. But the old part of the school, the historic part of the mill, school, is where this is planned. It's not like below grade subsurface, but if you come in, you know, it's half half a grade down, I guess.
Okay.
And that's been one of the challenges on the cost is the whether an elevator or a ramp. I know Counselor Jalinas had thought she was more familiar with the building than I am. She thought a ramp might be able to access that portion of the building, which would be much.
So I see Catherine's on, but I don't want to speak for the council. I mean, I I sense that this was important to the council. Am I accurate in that assessment? I'm seeing a lot of nods. Am I seeing anyone opposed to that idea? Okay, thank you. Catherine, welcome to this portion of the meeting. Could you just share your thoughts on that? Because I I think we just had a brief discussion and it's pretty important to the council To try to identify that area and kind of lock it in.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, and I'm going to the council, thank you so much.
Yeah, we're not, we can't hear you, Catherine. That's better.
Can you hear, can you hear me now?
Yeah, I heard that. I'm great, so you're definitely.
All right, thank you. Thank you for having, for considering this item tonight at the end of a long event, I know it's been a long evening. As to the conversation so far about the senior center, Our intention is very much to work with the city and any identified organizations that would be involved in that To determine exactly what the needs would be. The the reason for the lack of information and specificity at this stage Is that we have not had the specific conversations with the senior center As an organization to know what the needs would be and what the ideal orientation of the space would be. As Lincoln has has described the conversation thus far, Has considered using the ground floor of the historic Martell School for that, the senior center. We've, we do have some general square footage and know the overall layout of that floor as it exists. So there would be several thousand square feet that could be available for use If dependent on the needs and the capacity of the group that would be building it out. As Link identified, one of the items that we would need to resolve would be the accessibility component Because that ground floor is partially below grade. I believe like between three and and five feet maybe below grade. So you still have have full windows or fairly full windows, but it would be a, there would be a need Either for like a half stop on an elevator or a ramp. A ramp would likely be feasible. But we have not, we have not specifically designed that. And we have, we haven't moved forward with any specific design at this stage. But that would be a key component once we have an option in place. That would be a key component of our process moving forward And the direction that we give to our design team to make sure that those considerations are taken into. Yeah, so those are, those are considered.
Okay, thank you. And if you could just kind of stay on the line, Counselor Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know I've talked about it before, but if we really want to ask the question, is this the least expensive place to create a senior center? I mean, it's a good location if there's already senior housing there. A lot of people in the community like that spot, just close by to places, not too hard to get to. Again, I raised concerns about parking in the area. I think the the school when it was operating had to like lease or rent out parking from an adjacent lot. We should definitely look into if that was true or not. I know I've talked a few meetings about the condition of the building and that I'm still not, you know, I'm not entirely comfortable that we know exactly how much it's going to cost to fix things up. So I mean, if we could get someone from the city to to check that out and maybe get some kind of assessment, that would be good. Did someone mention that a potential senior center might be in the basement of the building?
That's where they're, that's what they're looking at right now.
Okay, because I know that area had like a lot of issues with mold and I'm not sure that they're entirely gone away. Let's see. And I know that as part of the plan, there may be if if the project does need more funding to take care of some environmental issues, they may come to the city. So again, there's no certainty exactly how much it's going to cost. I'm supportive of the project, I just have a lot of questions and concerns And I don't want to go straightforward with making a senior center, telling your citizens, this is where our senior center is going to be. And then at some point you realize, like, this is a money pit, it's not working out, this building is not suited for this. So before we really get into it, I think we need to evaluate more, is this the best place for a senior center? What are the other costs and risks that we're taking about this?
All right. Go ahead and respond to that, Ed.
Yeah, just to, just so everybody's clear, what basically the agreement calls for is a feasibility study To be conducted over the summer or actually by August fifteenth. So that would attempt to answer at least some of the questions that have been raised. And certainly, even if the feasibility study comes back positive and the project continues, I have no doubt if something jumps up and bites everyone in terms of an unanticipated problem, that we certainly revisited at that point.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Khalid?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I I am supportive of a senior center. I just don't know if that particular location is the best place, especially if we will use, See if we we're going to think about using CDBG funds. I think we should look at other locations that is more accessible to all the community, all the seniors in the city.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Ray?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I think the the concept of the senior center being co-located at the Avesta project Was something that kind of came late onto the radar. And so even though we're speaking about the agreement right now, I think that's why lingering questions exist. And so I just wanted to express, you know, I've had multiple meetings with those on the seniors board And there is a real interest in moving their location. And it's not to say that this will be the perfect location for that. But, you know, many of the folks who participate in seniors programming Had initially asked that we not put the project at bid and we instead build a community And or sole senior center at this location for Martell. And so there have been a lot of voices weighing in on that prior to the bid process and the bid being awarded to Avesta. I think in terms of this agreement, it's keeping our options open. And I think Avesta as a organization are, they're being very gracious And giving us a lot of latitude with the upkeep of the green space And allowing us to work on the playground if that's what we so choose to do And then keeping the conversation open for the senior center. The one question I had, Ed, you referenced an August fifteenth date, Given the fact that we just chose not to fund a recreation program or position And the fact that that department is working in in a skinny lean way now, is there any latitude on that date?
I, part of what's driving that is, the reason this is on the council agenda tonight Is that for Avesta to go forward, they need to have site control so they can get through the development review process And get approved in time to apply for the tax credits in the fall round. Catherine perhaps can can weigh in a little bit on this as well. But I think they they had the flexibility, how much further we could extend it, I'm not sure. But I think the conversations need to happen sooner rather than later, really. Councils expressed concerns throughout on this parking. I've been reminded this evening of several issues the councils have raised. Well, I think we need to get to those sooner rather than later.
Yeah, just to echo what Link said there, that the timeline is driven by what's required for the state low-income housing tax application. That to do, preliminary applications are due midsummer and then final applications are due in the fall. So to be competitive for that funding, we would need to have a fairly good idea Of what the overall scope of the project would be by the time of that application. But that said, that August fifteenth date, there's there's a range of certainty that we could have Or a range of information that we could have about the feasibility of a senior center going forward. So it wouldn't necessarily need to be a situation where it's fully funded, we know exactly how large it's going to be. We have everything built out and fully designed. But having having a clearer sense of what would be needed and what would be feasible Certainly needs to happen by that point because of the way the funding structure happens. So the, I mean, we we certainly want to be, our intention would be To be a good partner to the city in pursuing these conversations To hopefully come to that joint agreement around what what is feasible and what can happen in that space. And if we're close to something by August fifteenth but don't have everything nailed down, That doesn't necessarily have to be a drop dead date. But we do just need a little, we would, we would need some confirmation of the feasibility by then, which is why that appears in the agreement.
Can I just follow up with one thing, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So I, as you were all saying, sooner rather than later seems very pertinent, given the staffing levels. But also, I think, starting with phone outreach to seniors in our community to get their opinions will be really critical. I I imagine many folks who fall into that category are very much observing social distancing and stay-at-home order. And so if there's a way that can be helped to get their opinions, because I think they're valuable But also probably a little harder to get when they're not congregating.
Yeah, and I I believe the Rec Department has a working list of seniors right now. Is that correct, Ed?
I believe they do. They've been, they they put together a list of people that use our facility currently And have outreach to them over the last few months.
Okay, good, thank you. And just another, you know, I'd like to note another example of councilors reaching out to their constituents. I know Counselor Joy and Counselor Ray have regularly met with the seniors to discuss any of the issues. That's just another example of us having contact with our constituents on a regular basis. Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Catherine. With no questions or comments, call the roll.
Counsel from Word Two?
Yes.
Word Three?
Yes.
Word Four?
Yes.
Word Five?
Yes.
Word Six?
Yes.
Word Seven?
Yes.
And Word One?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Lincoln. Agenda item twenty-one.
Item number twenty-one, Order Authorizing the City Administrator to Execute a Collective Bargaining Agreement With the International Association of Firefighters Local Seven Eighty-Five. Requested action to approve the order authorizing the city administrator To execute a collective bargaining agreement with the International Association of Firefighters.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved. Back in.
Moved by Counsel Khalid, seconded by Counselor Ray, and Dennis, take it away.
Yep, you got a three-year count, a three-year contract in front of you That goes effective July first of twenty twenty, excuse me, twenty, sorry, last year, July first For the, and then goes two more years from now. The basic, you know, contents of the contract are COLA updates or wage increase at two and a half percent On July first of each year of the contract and another half a percent on January first of each year. That's it, and that's all the new contract contains.
All right, any questions or comment? This is very similar to the police officer one that we recently did.
Very similar, correct.
Questions or comments? Seeing none. Call the roll.
Counsel from Word Two?
Yes.
Word Three?
Yes, sorry.
Word Four?
Yes.
Word Five?
Yes.
Word Six?
Yes.
Word Seven?
Yes.
And Word One?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Okay, agenda item number twenty-two?
Item number twenty-two, Reports and Updates.
Do it. Counselor Ray?
The school committee met last night. As you've heard, we approved the FY twenty-one budget, the LCIP surplus transfer funds, the amendments to the LCIP. We also heard a brief update from the poverty committee And they are continuing to meet through digital means and hope to deliver a workshop to us upcoming As well as an upcoming workshop on a possible amendment to the timeline for the Lewiston High School expansion. So once I have more information on that, I will happily pass it along. That's it, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Any other councilors? All right, agenda item number twenty-three, and I know Ed tried to kill us tonight with a twenty-three item agenda, but he didn't do it.
It's only because, it's only because it takes thirty-five and a half items to approve a budget. And it would have been longer if you actually did the school budget tonight. Because you're going to have to come back next month and adopt a school budget Because we can't act formally on the school budget until we're within thirty days of the referendum election on it. So that's still out there. We do have one plug number in the budget, so they're covered. But we do have to act on the actual school resolves that the state requires.
Okay, thank you. So is there any other city business councilors wish to speak of?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Ray?
I feel like I've talked as much as Ed and Heather tonight, so I apologize for that. But it has become increasingly clear through constituent outreach throughout today And our conversations that it may warrant a Recreation Department conversation upcoming About how with reduced staffing, they are going to be able to execute their plans for the year. And so I just wanted to, first of all, thank the the constituents who reached out to us throughout the day. And then also make sure that we have a plan to talk about it going forward. I think, you know, we trust our staff to do this work. But if there is any way we can have more public conversation about what that looks like for the next year, I think that would be beneficial personally.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? I'll have a conversation with Ed over the next week. We'll just try to see if if it's something we should workshop and, you know, would it be midsummer or something? But I'll have a discussion with Ed on that and get back to you directly, okay, Alicia? and, you know, would it be midsummer or something, but I'll have a discussion with Ed on that and get back to you directly. Okay, Alicia? All right, nothing else. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Jensen?
I move to adjourn.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Clement?
I realize the motion's already on the floor, but I do have one other item. I noticed just before we met this evening, city administrator forwarded an email to the council from the county commission regarding a meeting that they're having tomorrow evening.
Right.
Don't know whether this is anything that the, the council wants to discuss, whether they want to support, whether they just want to remain neutral or anything like that at this point.
So how, what would be the, what would be? How would we address that? I mean, we're made aware of it. Unless enough counselors want to take a position on it, Ed, I'm kind of turning to you for a little guidance.
Well, it's, it's certainly not on the agenda tonight. So if you wanted to take any kind of formal action on the agenda, the first requirement would be to suspend the rules to discuss it and see if you wanted to even do it or not.
Okay, so, you know, as mayor, I personally would not want us to get involved in that, but that's just my opinion. So why don't other counselors, you can either share now if you think we should or you can reach out to me individually and just share your thoughts on that. What do you think, Lee? Would that work?
Well, certainly would work. Or as the administrator, I mean, I, I don't have any strong feelings one way or the other. I just wanted to make sure that we as a body did not pass up an opportunity one way or the other. You know, I have some personal feelings, but, you know, if, if nobody else is interested, I, that doesn't bother me in the least either.
Okay, well, I don't know. I'll plan on reaching out individually to counselors to hear their thoughts and, go ahead, Dennis.
You have Counselor Ray that had her hand raised.
Okay, Counselor Ray?
It's just ever-present. I'm sorry. But I, I reached out personally to my county commissioner to express my opinion because I felt moved to act on this. However, I then realized in conversation with the county commissioner that this might not be on their agenda tomorrow and it might be something that's just coming up. So that press release came from an individual county commissioner, not from the county commission itself. And so that was a helpful clarification for me to have. And then I just expressed my personal opinion. I do not think this body should act on the opinion of one member, but not, not their body personally.
Okay, so and that is another option to any counselor to reach out to, you know, the, the commission to share your thoughts on that as well. I'll still individually reach out to everybody just to hear their thoughts and, and then I'll discuss it with you further. Is that, are you okay with that, Lee?
Absolutely.
Okay, good. Thank you. All right, so I had a motion by Counselor Jensen and a second by Counselor Joy. All in favor? Call, call the roll, I'm sorry.
Counselor from Word Two?
Yes.
Word Three?
Yes.
Word Four?
Yes.
Word Five?
Yes.
Word Six?
Yes.
Word Seven?
Yes.
And Word One?
Totally yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
All right, thank you all.
And good night.
See you next Tuesday.
Good night.
Good night.